So, I'm sure everybody realizes that Boulder has been, or hasn't been enduring, one of the most extraordinary weather events we've had, at least in all the years I've lived here, and probably for much longer than that. A lot of damage, a lot of people really hurting all over the city, and especially even more so up in the county. With that in mind, we've completely changed the agenda for tonight. I think some of you know that, but just to make it clear to everybody who's in the audience or who might be listening, we're essentially turning over the bulk of this meeting for an update from staff and then a discussion from council on all of the flood issues, all of the damage done, the damage assessments, information on what to do next, how we're going to do the cleanup, how we're going to help people, and so on. That will be followed with an open comment period as always, and we expect some people who want to talk about the flood issues, which is perfectly fine. We do have a reduced consent agenda that we need to do this evening, just because there are, there's still some city business that must get accomplished. There is one item scheduled for a public hearing, and it is quite timely, as it were, since it has to do with floodplain regulations, so-called critical facilities. If you want to speak to that, you may do so when we get to the public hearing. That will obviously not be for a while tonight. I should have said, if you want to speak during open comment, we normally start the meeting with open comment. You can assume that open comment will not happen for a while. I think the presentation and the update and the questions from council will take a while, but we think it's important to do that before open comment, and we think it's really important to get information out to the community. So, if you want to speak to open comment, we welcome your thoughts, but please, first of all, please sign up at the city clerk's desk, and secondly, in this unusual evening, please be prepared and be patient to wait for quite a while before we get to that part of the meeting. So, that's essentially what we have on the agenda. There's a couple of other small items. The item of interest, that we got a lot of emails, which has to do with the various marijuana ordinances, those, the bulk of those essentially have been rescheduled for October 8th, several Tuesdays from now, so any of you interested in the various marijuana ordinances and regulations, we are still going to discuss all of that fully and with full public hearings, but I think you understand why it's been delayed till October 8th. So, that's the, kind of the logistics. Again, we've all endured an extraordinary event in Boulder with much damage, much community concern, much cleanup, wonderful community effort, I think, that all of us have seen, people helping each other, but still, a lot of, a lot of pain and a lot of repair and a lot of rebuilding and a lot of cleanup to go. So, the bulk of tonight is going to be devoted to, as I said, an update from staff about a whole variety of flood-related issues, including the current state of the situation, damage assessments, issues related to the flooding itself, and what was done well, maybe what wasn't done so well, what we can learn from, where we go from here, how people can help each other out, what's the city's role moving forward. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Jane Brodigan, to get the conversation started. Jane?
Thank you, Matt. So, the way that we'll be presenting tonight is that I have a few brief comments, then we're going to show a video of some of the damage, and then we're going to have several of the department directors, most directly affected, come up and talk to you about what's been going on in their lives the past few days. So, those will be a presentation by Mark Beckner, our police chief on the public safety aspects, Maureen Raitt, our executive director of Public Works on the Public Works aspects, Mike Patton from Open Space, then back to me, and I'll be talking a bit about debris management and community outreach, and then we'll wrap up. And after each one of the presentations, there will be time for you to have questions so that you don't have to save all of your questions to the end. And as you know, tonight, we've got many people from the city staff in the audience, they're already willing and able to answer the questions that you might have, if I can't answer them.
And I want to make one other comment. I'm sure Jane will mention this about her staff, but I think it needs to come from us as well, and that is the remarkable work that's been done. I mean, I understand that there are certainly people in the community who feel we could have done more, we could have done better in some places, and perhaps we could have been, and this, we will learn from this and we will do better, but for anybody who's been out and about the last five days, as much as I have, as much as all of us have, and I also had the opportunity to spend some time at the Emergency Operations Center, it has been just a remarkable effort of people working essentially around the clock. I mean, this was really in, you know, life safety mode. There was certainly cleanup to be done, there were basements that are flooded, there's damage, but we just have spent the last several days in just making sure that people are safe, that basic city services continue to run into function, and, I mean, it really has been a remarkable job, and staff should really be recognized for all the work that they've done. I know, I've seen Jane at this for, I don't know how many hours, but it's not just her, it's, it's all of the staff who've been out and about, everybody from the department heads down to the, you know, the police in the street, and the fire staff, and the Open Space people, and the parks people who've just been working at this essentially non-stop and realize they have a lot more work to do. So, I'm sure other of my council members will say similar things and join me in this, but a big thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Matt. It's most appreciated. On September 11th, a slow-moving storm settled over Boulder, and based on weather forecasts, we knew there would be significant rainfall, but at that point, we didn't know exactly what to expect. The city-county joint emergency operations center had been monitoring weather patterns at 11:00 AM and began calling in staff at 4:15 PM. By 6:20, we were experiencing routine localized flooding, and by 9:11 PM, it was all hands-on-deck, with the expectation that low-lying areas would flood. At 9:58, we sounded the sirens to move away from the Boulder Creek area. The storm circled back on Boulder several times over a seven-day period, dumped 15 inches of rain on Boulder. To put that in perspective, Boulder normally receives less than two inches of rainfall in September, and we have already set a new record for 17 inches of rain so far this month. As you know, much of that rain came in one day. On September 12th, we set an all-time one-day record of 9.08 inches. The previous record was 4.8 inches, set July 31st, 1919. Boulder's current rainfall total for this year is 30 inches, also a new record. This tremendous amount of water flooded every drainage in the county. This flood was different from what is normally expected in a high plains town at the mouth of a canyon. What Boulder expects is a fast-moving summer storm causing a flash flood in one or two major drainage ways. What we experienced over the last several days was a slow-moving, almost tropical storm affecting every major drainage system in the city, and, as you know, the heavy rains impacted nearly every front-range community from south of Denver to the Wyoming border, some far worse than Boulder. Thousands of people were evacuated by the emergency responders and the National Guard. We had three fatalities in Boulder County, with about 200 county residents still unaccounted for. This was the worst flooding the city has seen in decades. People lost their lives, homes were lost, cars were swept away, and yet, a few blocks away from the worst flooding, everything was fine. Neighborhoods appear to be unaffected, and people expect things to return to normal. The devastation was incredible in some areas, and I'd like council and the community to take a virtual tour of the flooding, the damage, and of city crews hard at work to restore city infrastructure and services. We have a video. As you saw in the video, and many thanks to the crews who captured those images, parts of the city were hit hard. Some areas fared better, thanks to years of investments to mitigate potential floodwaters, and some areas of the city, such as Pearl Street and the shopping districts, had very little impact and are fully operational already. Before I turn the meeting over to staff that will provide an overview of public safety, public works, and Open Space, I'd like to thank the many, many people who came to Boulder's assistance. We had hundreds of staff members working around the clock to evacuate residents, protect our drinking water, open roads, and to communicate with our community about the emergency. We also had our partners in the county working shoulder to shoulder with city staff at the Joint Emergency Operations Center, the Army and National Guard, who brought in the amazing helicopters to airlift folks out of harm's way, and state and federal disaster response teams who continue to help with rescue efforts around the county. Special mention goes to the Emergency Operations Center staff headed by Director Mike Jarrett, Boulder County, the Boulder Valley School District, the St. Vrain School District, VIA, Western Disposal, Foothills United Way, the Chamber of Commerce, and Downtown Boulder Inc., and our utility partners. Matt?
Great, and I'd like to follow up on something Jane said, and I'm sure this will come up more in our presentation and questions. So, the city has invested very heavily over the years in floodplain mitigation. I can remember starting to talk about this 30 years ago, in fact, and I think to a lot of us, we look at some of the underpasses and think, well, that's cool, it's a nice bike path, it's a pedestrian path, that's why the city is doing it. In fact, the large majority of those, I would guess virtually all of them, really serve a purpose for floodplain mitigation, and it's something I think we don't think about very much until an event like last week occurs in your city. I mean, I've said to a few people, I've been looking at floodplain maps for 30 years as well, and it's one thing to look at lines on a map, they look like these really nice lines, and, you know, they're two-dimensional, and, and you get this sense of, sure, there'll be some water here, and it's an entirely other thing to see rivers of water running down the streets of your city in real time, in three dimensions, and doing all the damage that it's doing. But at any rate, our investments did work, we'll get some updates on that. They really did reduce the damage significantly, not to suggest there still wasn't a lot of damage, but it made a huge difference, and in fact, this very building probably owes its current high-and-dry status, in no small sense, to many of the improvements we've done over the years on Boulder Creek. So, in kind of summary, before we get to the staff presentations, this obviously was a significant event, really an extraordinary event. Lots of people lost their homes, some people lost their lives, especially in the unincorporated county areas, thankfully, nobody in the city did, but we are partners with the county in all of this, and, and very sorry that the dam, the amount of damage and the loss of lives up there. I'd also like to, one last piece, is offer a huge thank you to the federal government and our congressional delegation and everybody else who's helped us out. Actually, was contacted by White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs very early on in this, offering to support us in any way they could, and in fact, they did declare Boulder County a national disaster area and provided financial aid, and they did that remarkably quickly. We've also heard from our entire congressional delegation, offering their support and offering to work with us in the coming days and weeks and months, as we need to figure out ways to deal with the damage that's been done and get people back on their feet. And of course, a giant thank you again to all the responders, to all the great work that the city and county staff did together, and to all the people in our community who've worked through this with, I think, great grace and patience. Jane?
Thank you. I'll turn it over now to Police Chief Mark Beckner, who will talk about some of the public safety aspects of this, and our Fire Chief Larry Donner is here as well. Mark?
Good evening. As you know, this was a six-day event. I'm going to focus most of my comments around the worst two days, which was Wednesday evening through Friday morning was the worst part of it for us. As you know, it started raining early in the week, last week. However, the rain picked up in intensity on Wednesday, September 11th, and continued into early Thursday morning. The CFS, which is cubic feet per second, which is a measurement that we use in monitoring the amount of water that's coming down any creek, but in this case, I'm referring to Boulder Creek. So, on September 9th, it was at 54 cubic feet per second, and at 1:13 hours, which would be 1:13 AM on September 12th, it was at 3,104. So, in that short period of time, it gives you some reference as to how fast it went up. Our average is about 250 throughout the year, if you average the CFS. We started getting some low-level flooding on Wednesday, including basement flooding, reports of basements flooding, intersections flooding, low-lying areas. We didn't have a whole lot of water coming out of the banks at that point, but we were having low-level flooding. However, as the night wore on, onto Wednesday night, it started increasing in intensity, the rain started coming harder, we saw the drainages and creek beds rising. It was about late, sometime around mid-evening, on Wednesday evening, when we first sounded the sirens along the creek path. You may have heard them, some of you who live close down there. That was based on a supervisor's assessment that the water was rising at a dangerous rate, and he was concerned about the number of people he saw hanging around the creek area, watching the water. He also was aware of many of our homeless who frequent that area and hang out along the banks of the creek, and he was concerned that they would not understand the potential danger, and so that's the reason that the sirens were sounded. It was not an evacuation order, it was just a warning to get back away from the creek and to seek high ground. So, that happened on Wednesday evening. We were dealing with many flood-related calls by that time, and our concern was around public safety and how to protect the public from rising water. The CFS reached a height of about 31, at 3104 on Wednesday evening and into Thursday morning. So, it started to go back down as we headed into Thursday, and at 7:45 in the morning on Thursday, it was back down to 1,700. So, it was down to a more manageable rate. Still high, we still had a lot of flooding around town, a lot of intersections were flooded, many streets were closed at that time. It continued to rain all day Thursday, and again, picked up on Thursday afternoon and into the early evening. We saw the creek starting to rise again. We had additional intersection flooding, and some other, other streets were flooding that hadn't flooded on Wednesday. Our drainages, all of our drainages were exceeding capacity at this point and were overflowing. As Jane said, every drainage in Boulder County was being flooded, even beyond our county, into Laramie County, we were getting reports of flooding, so we knew it was pretty serious. We got to the point Thursday evening where we could no longer manage all of the closures, and we just had to let them go. And what we mean by that is we had to pull officers off of those closures and just allow people to fend for themselves, hoping they wouldn't drive through them. We barricaded as many as we could, we just didn't have enough personnel to cover them all, and we had other calls coming in for rescues and those sorts of things that we had to give priority to. We also had numerous other calls for service that we simply could not respond to. We suspended response to all burglar alarms. That evening, we responded, or we canceled all responses to minor incidents like traffic accidents, harassments, those sorts of things. We figured they could wait, and by the time we got to them, if they hadn't already resolved themselves, then we could deal with them then. So, we got information from the field that Four Mile Creek was flooding parts of North Boulder, Boulder Creek was flooding parts of Central Boulder, Gregory Canyon was flooding parts of the hill, although at that time, I don't think we knew that. We just knew that parts of the hill and up even as high as Mariposa was getting flooded, and we were scratching our heads over that one, because we had never planned for flooding up on the hill and that high up the hill, so we weren't sure where that water was coming from. Bear Creek, reports of flooding down south, and other drainages and ditches all over town, we were getting reports of flooding as well. By 6:55 PM, Boulder Creek was running at 3,141 CSF, CFS, and it was continuing to rise. We were monitoring it about every 15 minutes, getting reports from the Emergency Operations Center. I was in the command post at that time, Fire Chief Larry Donner was in the EOC, and we were communicating. He was providing me with information, we were providing them with information of what we were getting, reports from our officers on the street, because in this type of situation, you can depend on gauges and such, but having eyes on the ground is always a way to assess, you know, whether it's matching what the, what the data is showing you. What we found is the flooding seemed to be worse than what the data would indicate. We were looking at our charts that are set up, as Jane said, I think for those quick flash-type storms over a drainage area and sending water down a particular canyon, and this wasn't, what we were getting from the street wasn't matching what our charts were telling us should be happening, and I think that was attributed to all the rain that was coming down all over the county, not just in one spot. So, we kind of had to throw the charts out the window a little bit. So, we were depending on what we were seeing, what we were getting, reports from the street. Approaching about 10 o'clock, we had reports, started to get reports of rock and mudslides in Boulder Canyon. This started to concern us, because as that canyon gets blocked up with the rate of water that was coming down, you could dam it up, it could build, it could break through the dam, and then you would get that wall of water that we're usually concerned about here. So, that was a concern. A member of the Department of Transportation, the State Department of Transportation, was heading up the canyon to check on the mudslides and condition of the roadway, and was unable to get up the canyon because of a second mudslide right near the mouth of the canyon. And he was reporting back to us that he was seeing water backing up at the mouth of the canyon now, due to this second slide. So, that added to our anxiety. We continued to monitor the CFS, it continued to climb, it was now above 4,000, it was about 4,500. We also got word that the water was redirecting now out of Boulder Creek and was running down Canyon Boulevard, and we now had a river coming down Canyon Boulevard. So, again, what we were seeing wasn't matching what the data should be telling us. The CFS continued to climb towards 5,000. At this point, we really started to get concerned, and in combination with what our officers were telling us, we knew we had some problems. Secondly, we, public safety had trouble getting around town, once these intersections became flooded to the point where we could not get our vehicles through them. We still had some high-rise SUV-type vehicles that we were able to get through most areas, but many of our patrol cars were grounded into the area that they were, were stuck in. Continued to have conference calls with the EOC and with Larry Donner. At about 10:15, we were approaching 5,000, CFS, and we knew at that point, based on the data and what we were hearing from the street, that if we waited much longer on an evacuation, we were afraid people would just simply not be able to get out if we waited too long. So, in consultation with people at EOC, we came to a consensus that it was time to sound the alarm and get people out of harm's way. We believed that people from the mouth of the canyon to Broadway, between Pearl and Maureen, were most at danger. Again, we were concerned about the buildup we heard about at the mouth of the canyon, and so we evacuated that area through, we did Everbridge 911 callback, and we also sounded the sirens. The message that went out for those people in that area was to evacuate and move to high ground. The message that went out to people along the creek from Broadway to 55th was a bit different, gave them a warning of the water coming, told them to expect flooding and to stay, stay in their homes if they could, and if they could get to a second floor. If not, if they lived on a lower floor, they would, should consider getting out. So, we had two separate messages that went out. So, we allowed, we told people to evacuate before, and we told people to shelter in place if they could move to high ground. So, we had, during that same time, we had heavy flood reports coming out of the mouth of the canyon. We had extreme flows of water through the upper hill area, reports, streets getting washed out, 7th and Maureen, 7th and University, we had reports of tremendous amount of water coming down, and again, you know, we weren't sure where this water was coming from. The senior center and library were reported flooded. We had a river of water running down Arapahoe, as well as Canyon Boulevard. Central Park was flooded at this time, we had a river on the north side of the creek running through Central Park. Later, I went to look at that, and it was running extremely fast, looked like rapids going across Central Park. Newton Court was flooded, 1444 Folsom, on the other side of Folsom, in the city was flooded with about two feet of water. So, apartments had water, ground-level apartments had water up to the, two feet up the door, cars were surrounded in the parking lot. The Goss Grove neighborhood was flooded, and water all throughout the city was moving at a high rate of speed. Most intersections at this time were flooded as well. We also had reports of heavy flooding in North Boulder near the Four Mile Creek drainage, which ended up being significant, and Broadway was, had water running down it for a significant port. portion of North Broadway. We had Fifty-Seventh and Arapahoe, which was impassable. Three Eight Hundred Block was flooded of Arapahoe. Foothills was flooded near baseline. South Boulder Road was flooded, and parts of Table Mesa were flooded, just as an example of some of the more major areas. As I said, we had to discontinue responding to some calls, and other calls were just simply canceled. We average, to give you some idea of what we were handling, we average three hundred and eighteen calls per day throughout the year. On, just on Thursday, we had five hundred and thirty-two calls for service, or an increase of a hundred and sixty-seven percent. The fire department averages thirty-four calls per day, and just on Thursday, they had a hundred and sixty-seven for a four hundred and ninety-one percent increase. Did I say that for the PD, a hundred and sixty-seven? Or did I say five thirty-two? Okay. Five thirty, I'm sorry, five thirty-two is what the police handled that day, which was a hundred and sixty-seven percent increase. The fire department handled one sixty-seven for a four ninety-one percent increase. Our average phone calls into dispatch on any given day is about five hundred and forty-six. On Thursday, we handled two thousand nine hundred and fifty-five for an increase of five hundred and forty-one percent over normal. For PD staffing that day, we held over Watch Two once we knew how bad the conditions were, and we called in Watch Three to come in earlier than normal. They normally come in at nine. We were calling them in at about six o'clock that evening. We also called our SWAT team in, so anybody who wasn't working but on the SWAT team, we called them in as well to give us some additional staffing. We then devised a plan to go to twelve-hour shifts beginning at six o'clock the next morning on Friday. What we do is we basically split our department in half, including detectives, animal control, code enforcement, and we say, this group, you're going to report at six AM and work twelve hours, and this group, you're going to report at six PM and work twelve hours. So we can get the maximum amount of personnel on the street that we need. What that worked out to on Friday is we had eighty-three working the day shift, starting at six AM, and then fifty working the night shift that night, that Friday night. On Saturday, we had eighty-three during the day, and we had increased our night total to sixty-three for a hundred and forty-six total personnel working that shift. This continued on through Sunday evening, and then we transitioned back to normal shifts at that time. We still are having overtime officers come in to help with road closures and operations at the airport for evacuations. We had twenty-six on overtime on Monday in those operations, and today we had sixteen. As of today, the CFS has returned to around a thousand for Boulder Creek. It fluctuates a little bit, depending on time of day, but it's been hanging around a thousand. Fire department staffing, Wednesday through Sunday, they staffed their light rescue vehicle and water rescue vehicle in full service. Normally, they don't have full-time service on those vehicles, they did during this event. They added two additional fire response units, which were staffed over their normal of eight units. Wildland firefighters were involved in rescue operations assisting the county. They responded to thirty rescue calls during the event, twenty-seven of which were on Thursday alone. Fire alarms get activated when there's a lot of water due to electrical shorts, probably. They responded to thirty of those, thirty-six of those alone on Thursday. And the average number of medical calls stayed about the same during the event. They had about a hundred and thirty of those, but they had eighty-seven assist calls for other things, such as sparking electrical items, leaking gas, carbon monoxide, et cetera. And they had forty-one such calls just on Thursday. They did not respond to the many calls we had to flooded basements and to pump, pump out basements, that's not a service they are, they are able to provide due to being available for other emergency calls and rescues. So they in total responded to four hundred and forty-one calls over five days, forty of those, forty percent of which were simply on Thursday. And that's the public safety report.
So if you have questions about public safety?
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of overlap here on these various issues, but if we can keep questions to the police chief and fire chief Larry, do you want to add anything, or?
No, Mark, Mark did a great job summarizing. It was a, obviously, a very busy night. We work together to prioritize calls so that whenever we do send people in, we make sure they're the more urgent calls. And the numbers that both our departments reflect are somewhat light, because if it's something minor, you incur while you're en route to something else, you stop. If it's maybe helping someone out of a car, many of those didn't get counted. So we tried to work together to maximize the resources we had at the time.
Ken?
What is the expected CFS on Boulder Creek for the hundred-year flood that we normally plan?
Generally, in the spring, when we do our training, we talk in the neighborhood of eight thousand CFS.
So, so that would be?
Excuse me, twelve. I misspoke. I should bring someone from the hydrologist up. Incidentally, at the EOC, part of the reason I was there, Public Works provides hydrologist. So we had real-time experts helping inform the decisions we were making in conjunction with the reports we were getting from Mark.
And this may be another hydrology question. We just spent a lot of money with the state to raise the Broadway Bridge out here. How, how many feet did we raise that bridge?
How about if we hold that for?
Okay.
When we get Public Works peoples up here, but you can, you can ponder that.
Yeah.
For the moment.
That's all.
Others on, on the life safety issues, Tim?
So chief, chief, I'd look at both sides. So in the press, there have been accounts of, of people who are unaccounted for in the county. And I'm just wondering, do we have a number, or is there anyone unaccounted for in the city at this time?
Fortunately, we had no fatalities and no reported injuries in the city, and we have no reported missing people at this time.
Great, that's great news, thank you.
So I have one life safety question, and it really revolves around the hospitals, neither of which seem to be in particularly fabulous locations. And, and I don't know, you know, what your experience was with this. Again, we weren't expecting, now maybe we are, an event where every single drainage way was flooding simultaneously. But, you know, from most parts of town, especially at the height of it on Thursday night, I came down Broadway late Thursday, I suppose semi-legally, and it was a, you know, North Broadway was a river. It would have been difficult to get to the Broadway campus. The other campus, eventually, as far as I could tell, every intersection along Foothills was closed, which means you couldn't get east. And that's where I'm sure they're going to move all of their emergency services to. So how do we deal with that?
So relatively speaking, the Boulder camp, or the Broadway campus was in worse shape. We actually sandbagged part of that building to keep their emergency generation system in service in case we would have lost power. The Foothills campus, the drainage way, the floodway around worked as it was supposed to. So if you see aerial shots of that, you can see quite clearly they were on high ground. So ordinarily, I think the new location will, will work for us is just the unexpected amount of rain coming down on the streets. A lot of the flooding we get, got was simply surface flooding that didn't have time to get to the drainages. And so from my perspective, I'm more comfortable with the new location than I am with the old location.
Okay. Well, I mean, just, again, it was getting, it was certainly a time, it seemed to me, Thursday night, where you just couldn't get east. And maybe an ambulance go, or maybe a fire truck could, but?
Generally speaking, as a general rule, you couldn't get anywhere.
Okay. Suzie?
Well, that raises a question about what the planning is if our community is split in half in terms of the distribution of your officers or your, or your equipment.
So what we do typically on the fire side is when we get that, we split the city in two, and we try and have resources essentially on both sides of Boulder Creek. In this particular case, we split the district, so we had people north, we had people on an island around Station One, which is across from Casey Middle School, and then we had people south. So we try to distribute the resources we have so that we have, albeit limited, we do have some response for the community.
And when did you do that, Larry? Did that happen?
The battalion chief on duty did that about midnight Wednesday or early in the morning Thursday.
Okay.
And that's when we started calling in extra people to staff up some extra equipment. The difficulty we had at that point is the streets were so bad that people were having difficulty actually getting in to, so that created some issues for us also.
And we do the same thing on Wednesday night. We split the city up and we assigned people to different sections of the city because they were getting separated and they couldn't get around. And we had the same problem Larry's people had with getting people to work, because everything was closed east of here, and people were having a difficult time getting to work.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, going back to the hospital situation, so were both hospitals function, functioning and receiving new patients during this flooding event, or?
Yes, both hospitals remained in service. The sandbags we provided for the Broadway campus, we were able to keep both the emergency room open, and we were able to keep the power generator protected, although I will say we did not lose power to that facility. And the Foothills campus remained open the entire time.
George?
Just a, a quick one, chief, you, you talked about difficulty in your officers getting around because they're just driving regular cars. Does this lead you to believe that you need to have some changes in extra higher equip, equipment, or are you comfortable with what you have now? I know you have a lot of big, big toys. He doesn't.
Well, actually, some of the newer vehicles we're buying, we're buy, they make now an Explorer that's a police package. That's a vehicle that we're buying more of those as we replace our cars for, for those reasons. Not only this, but in snowstorms as well. It really gives us the ability to respond and get around. So we are addressing that, that problem, and we probably have more SUV four-wheel-drive vehicles today than we've had in the past, and they are flex fuel vehicles, so that helps too.
Why?
The environment, George.
Oh, the environment, no.
I think in an emergency, gasoline is just fine too, I would think.
Well, they're flex fuel.
Others on life safety? Or related issues? Okay, I mean, I guess, I guess my question would be, I'm going to ask everybody this, but, and it's a little early, but I mean, initial thoughts in terms of, I don't know, what we could plan for a little differently. And I, I mean, the simple answer is nobody assumed all the creeks would flood simultaneously. You gave us, and I just, I did want to point this out, I mean, you, you were watching the, the flow in Boulder Creek, which is important, obviously, if Boulder Creek really flooded seriously, it would do massive damage. But this was a storm in which it sure seemed to me that most of the damage was coming from all the tributaries that most people frankly most, ignore most of the time, and yet they were the raging rivers. I'm just curious what, what your initial thoughts are.
So we, we plan, what, what we generally plan is if we're going to get a flood, it's going to be two or three tributaries in any given thing. So we hit the breadth. When the rain hit the burn scar, we immediately start looking at two places. One is Boulder Creek, and the other is Four Mile Canyon Creek, which is to the north. And so we, we look at that, and we have plans around it. For me, the, the lesson that we can look at is where the city has been able to, through Public Works projects, plan for the flood, we did much better than those areas of the city that we haven't gotten to yet. The other issue for us is you can plan, but you build your plans around the resources you have, and I think if a community tried to staff for the five-hundred-year flood, there would be a rebellion within the community because you, you simply can't afford on a day-to-day basis to staff for your worst possible scenario.
Yeah. Yeah, Casey?
Matt, my questions are mostly around communication and how that happened. Is that, do I talk to these guys about it, or is there someone separate coming up?
Which, which type of communication?
Internal communication?
Well, communicating with the public or the public communicating with public safety. Well, I'll, I'll just speak up. How, when you guys were getting information, how is that shared with, you know, the Boulder OEM website, or how, how did you, you know, what was, what were your best channels for communicating your concerns or the status of things? So what I'm kind of wondering about is like the sirens went off, and a lot of people were saying, why are the sirens getting, going off?
Well, you got to understand, it's a big operation. Don't think of it as, here's the police piece, here's the fire piece. We actually, even though we have a big role, we are small parts of an entire operation that's going on behind the scenes. And at the Emergency Operations Center, they have people there who are responsible simply for communicating to the public. And that's part of their role, is putting out messages, putting out information on the webpage and those sorts of things. We are, we have PIOs assigned to, we had a PIO assigned to the Incident Command as well, who was communicating back and forth with OEM so that that communication flow was as real-time as can be possible. Because obviously, we don't have time to worry about that aspect of the operation. But there are people who that's their focus, and that's, that's what they focus on. And, you know, when, when people say they don't know why the sirens are going off, and when they're blaring why they're going off, I really don't know what to say to that. I mean, a siren goes off because there's an emergency, and you need to be listening to the message. Don't go to your TV and find out why the siren's going off. That's an emergency. It's, that usually means, hey, I need to pay attention to what the siren is saying, you know, what the announcement is, and, and follow it. So, yeah, I just don't know how to answer that, Casey.
Casey, if I can add some additional information. The city staffed about six PIOs at the Emergency Operations Center the first two days. We had a police PIO in the field, we had several at the EOC. We're embedded with all the operation heads, getting information directly there, posting it on to the BoulderOEM.com website, communicating with the media, sharing information back and forth. We did ten or eleven press briefings since this has started to make sure information is getting out. So as we hear things about the sirens being activated, that's being made public elsewhere as well.
What, in, what were those public, I'm, it's just a question, it's not an accusation.
Sure. So, so when we say we're staffing the EOC with PIOs, we have direct media lines where the media is calling us probably every ten minutes. We probably fielded hundreds of media phone calls in those first couple of days, giving them blow-by-blow's of what is happening, that's public information that has been confirmed and official, which is a little different than the social media, you know, Twitter sphere where anything can be put up. We're posting things that have been confirmed, people on the ground have seen it from the city or the county or the IMT. So we're putting out official public information as to what the next step should be and what we're expecting the community to do.
And Patrick, if you could introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. Patrick Von Kaiser, running Communication Director with the city.
So Casey, I might add, we try a variety of things. Our PIOs tweet, they do Facebook, they do the webpage, we have the media, and there's still probably ten percent of the people that say, why didn't I get a message? So the direct answer is, we don't know. We try as many means as possible to get the word out to the public.
And, and a quick translation, just in case anybody needs one, PIO is Public Information Officer.
I apologize if.
No, that's okay, we all talk in code.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, actually, Macon?
Are the emergency, well, those sirens, when they do a test, it sounds like they're spinning, so they throw out the announcements in various directions. And I didn't have that sensation when the sirens started going off on Wednesday evening. Were they in fact projecting the message? Partly, the rain was so heavy that it made it harder to hear.
So when we put the sirens in, we put them closer than what the manufacturers recommend because the manufacturers always tell you how far they'll travel on a still day. Because of weather, we spaced them closer together, and they announce a message, rotate ninety degrees, announce a message, and so they, they do go around. In all honesty, I wasn't in the field, so I can't tell you if they operated as they were programmed.
I think they did.
And of course, people always want to know who the voice is behind the warnings.
It should be obvious, listening to me, it wasn't me.
Suzanne?
So I don't know if this is you guys or Public Works, but I just want to throw it out there. Because I agree, a lot went right. And so that's the context for my question. But I live in the neighborhood where Gregory Creek didn't behave perhaps as we would have expected or liked. And we did a really useful flood tour today, and we were talking to various people as we were surveying damage. And this gets at the communication question, which is, in the hundreds of calls you were receiving, and I'm not sure where these calls went, some people said that they called in that there were blocked culverts. And I'm just curious, you know, as we sort through how we might respond in the future, I don't know where those calls went, or if they, how they get folded in, or whether they would have made a difference. But there are some people whose perception is that if somehow those had been prioritized, some damage might have been prevented. And who knows if that's true. But there is some perception out there, and I'm just kinda curious how...
Wednesday afternoon, too.
Yeah, Wednesday afternoon. How, how those calls came into the system?
So they come in a variety of ways. Thursday, we put a number in service for people to call for urgent items that weren't necessarily emergencies. Those calls go to the Emergency Operations Center, and they're evaluated as far as severity. And in some cases, we had a lot of calls for a lot of debris in a lot of areas. So in that particular case, what we do is we look and say, do we have equipment that can get there safely, handle it, and relative to other blockages, how does that fit? So the direct answer is with that particular blockage, I don't know who it was communicated to and where it ended up on the queue.
Was Twitter of assistance at all to throw some misleading cues? Was it useful?
It depends. I will tell you, the information that the city and county public information officers tweet is pretty reliable. But with Twitter, anyone can tweet, and most people tweet what they see within their line of vision. So sometimes it's very useful and sometimes it's so limited in scope that it isn't. The difficulty we have with any of that type of media, it's a lot of individual messages that someone has to sort through and try and figure out what's really happening in the field. So it's generally folded in as confirmation to what the gauges are telling us or other eyewitness reports we have.
There was one point at which a released wall of water was reported to be coming down Four Mile Canyon, Four Mile Creek Canyon from Emerson, if it serves me well. And so there was special anxiety down in the center part of town about when this was gonna hit. I mean, Channel 7 and Channel 9 were playing this up big time. And then it, you know, no wall of water materialized, I guess, either in the canyon or in the floodplain. And I just...
That had to do with the release of a mountain, or a side of a mountain, which was real. You can find video of it on the internet. And so just from previous experiences we've had, if you get a four-foot wall of water coming down Four Mile, Four Mile, not Four Mile Canyon Creek, when it hits Boulder Creek, it'll raise maybe two or three inches. The tweet that got us excited was the one that said there was a 10-foot wall of water coming down Boulder Canyon, which we were able to sort out and find out wasn't happening. But just for whatever information, I got my heart beat picked up.
Suzie?
Just one comment back on the sirens again. They were not, you couldn't audible, you couldn't hear the message. Just we, I know we're gonna be thinking about this, but I went outside when that one went off. And I couldn't, I heard a voice, but I could not distinguish the words. So I had to go back...
Where were you at?
I'm at the corner of 19th and King, which is sort of south-central Boulder.
Yeah.
Chief, I was downtown.
Yeah, I was just throwing that out, that I think we do have to take a look at how effective those are under certain kinds of conditions.
I think we need to look at it, because the other trick with sirens is you have to talk incredibly slow, or your words...
That's true, too.
I was downtown Walnut and 17th and had no idea what it was saying. And it's, so that's going to happen. You can't plan for every situation. It's, but what are the other sources where you can say, wow, what was that?
We did do the 911 callback to everybody in that, who lived in that, within that area that I described, between Pearl and Marine. And then, of course, we did the media releases and the tweets and everything that, you know, everything that's available to us, we tried to use to notify people.
Yeah, absolutely. Fair enough. I just...
But I hear what you're saying. We'll investigate that.
So I actually could, I could understand it at my house. Just the sirens and the message. I just wanted to let you know that, so.
A lot of it depends on distance and where you are in relationship to that 90-degree stop. If you happen to be at 45 degrees, you're not gonna get as clear a message as you are if you're straight on from where it makes its...
And I would just say also, the other thing that was very helpful was the emergency alert that came on the iPhone. And it makes this really nasty squawking sound that makes you get up and look at the phone. And I thought that was maybe the most effective communication tool that, for me, that we had.
And this will allow me a chance to give a plug also. If people haven't registered their cell phone numbers, you can go either to the city or county site, and they'll direct, it has a place where it'll direct you, where you can register your phone to get those messages.
One of the problems we had were people who actually lived west of the mouth of the canyon and were actually county residents. So technically, we're not our jurisdiction, but we were trying to get the word to them as well. And we couldn't because they hadn't signed up for the reverse 911. And we couldn't get up there because we were blocked. So that created a real concern for us. And one of the people rescued, and there was a picture of him being carried out in a chair, was one of the people who lived up there. And had we been able to get word up there, you know, maybe he could have evacuated sooner. So, you know, I think your message is very apropos, is you need to sign up for those 911 calls.
If you've got a landline, it happens through billing records and stuff. If you have a cell phone, you have to register to get the call.
Yeah. All right. Thank you both. There may be some additional questions, but thanks so much. Thanks so much for all your work, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
You and your staff.
And next is Maureen Ray, the Executive Director of Public Works. Maureen?
Hi. I'd like to echo the sentiments expressed by the mayor and the city manager about those who have lost so much during this time. I'd also like to extend our thanks to all our community partners who have been working with us, who continue to work with us daily in the field solving problems. In the aftermath of the event, the Boulder community appears to be better off than many towns and other cities. But we continue to be in a Public Works response mode. This means we're still clearing the transportation system, and we are still addressing sanitary sewer blockages. So fortunately, water service has not been significantly impacted so far. Before I get into an operational summary, I want to highlight what I can answer tonight. I do not have data or numbers relative to total properties without service or projected costs for repairs. It would be premature to offer estimates when we're still in a response mode. We have not yet completed an assessment of all our systems, but assessments are underway, and we are documenting everything. We will be debriefing our entire operational response, and I will be prepared and able to share more information with council at your next business meeting. Stepping back for a moment, we do take solace that this event could have had greater impacts on our community. And as our mayor noted, there's been a lot of investment over past decades in infrastructure. Large sections of Boulder are in good shape as a result. The city's investment in particular, Matt noted, Boulder Creek drainageway improvements, including the Broadway Bridge, designed to convey a 100-year storm. Other investments over the past decades include Goose Creek from Folsom to Boulder Creek, Elmer's Two Mile Creek, channel improvements from Valmont Road to Goose Creek, Bear Creek Canyon improvements, such as the floodway improvements in two underpasses between Martin Drive and Moorhead, Mohawk Underpass and flood capacity improvements, Gilpin Underpass and flood capacity improvements, the replacement of the Broadway Underpass, reconstruction of Anderson Ditch and ditch crossing, and other channel improvements, also the Martin Park channelization that occurred. Additionally, since 2001, the city has also purchased 11 properties in the high-hazard zone. The purchase and deconstruction of those residential units helped reduce risk to people and property. So while we're still conducting our damage assessments, in general, the greatest impacts to date have occurred along Two Mile Canyon Creek, Four Mile Canyon Creek, Gregory Canyon Creek, as you noted, Wonderland Creek near Foothills Parkway, and South Boulder Creek. Prior to this event, staff programmed approximately $24 million for major drainageway improvements in our CIP through 2019. This includes improvements to Wonderland Creek from Foothills Parkway to Winding Trail, and Four Mile Canyon Creek from 19th to Violet. Another $4.5 million in bond improvement is programmed for South Boulder Creek flood mitigations. So now I'm gonna shift to some updates on our response. In the utilities area, both our city crews and our city contracted crews are working 24/7 to mitigate sanitary sewer backups throughout the city. We prioritize that work. While someone may not be appearing in front of your house or on your street, we want the community to know that city staff are working a very systematic approach to address the issue. For sewer blockages, we need to work the problem so that we don't inadvertently move the problem, you know? So, for example, focusing downstream and working up. And that's what we're doing. The sanitary sewer system is inundated with stormwater. The system is surcharged mostly south of Baseline Road, and there are major blockages in the stormwater, in the sanitary sewer system. The city's wastewater treatment facility is still functioning and is working at maximum capacity, over 50 million gallons of water a day compared to a more routine 12 million gallons a day. Continued water conservation is advised, and we'd like to thank the community for its conservation measures. The city is currently treating 11.5 million gallons of fresh water compared to a regular average of 28 million gallons per day. The Bataso Water Treatment Plant has a stable source of power, and the city is able to treat water without problems. But we've had to rely on Bataso during this event. 63rd Street remains offline. The water, the quality of the water in the Boulder feeder canal is the issue. It likely, we likely won't be able to pull from the canal until next year.
Maureen, will you just tell people you said 63rd Street is offline?
It's the water treatment facility. Thank you. Staff and contractors are working to improve culverts, and similar to the sanitary sewer system, problems need to be worked from the downstream up. In the transportation area, our first priority when the event took place was to support Mark and Larry and their staff, make sure that the streets were safe for emergency vehicle response. And then we shifted to making sure that we could get the streets passable for the rest of the community, and since then, clearing debris from the right-of-way, clearing storm inlets, and addressing street flooding in general. Utilities and transportation have joint assessment teams working together. Currently, a top priority is assessing roadway systems and evaluating repairs as needed. Some locations are still difficult to evaluate, given the levels of floodwater. Transportation crews have identified up to 10 locations, one to three blocks in length, where street reconstruction is needed. Many locations, though, still may emerge since flooding, as flooding recedes. The most significant arterial street that requires attention is Table Mesa Drive west of Broadway. Damage occurred due to the floodwater channel eroding under the curb and gutter. This morning, transportation staff met with consultant to discuss mitigation measures and solutions. The Gillespie Crossing of Table Mesa was re-inspected and reopened in anticipation of Boulder Valley School District schools opening tomorrow. The city did not lose a single bridge during this event, but staff continues to evaluate and monitor its bridges. We also continue to monitor the smaller timber bridges, Upland-Violet 26, along the Four Mile Drainage Way. As the water level drops, at this point, there are no visible signs of damage. A large, ongoing task will be sediment removal, as safety allows, which will allow, continue, which will continue to require close cooperation between both the utilities and transportation staff. I can also report that the traffic signal system remains 100% operational. As you know, and as our mayor mentioned, our numerous pathways serve as flood conveyance. They worked. Many are still underwater. We continue to evaluate city multi-use paths and are creating a prioritized list of repairs. Initial inspections show that a number of paths are still intact. We are cautiously optimistic. Recognizing that multi-use path system is an important part of our travel system, staff is evaluating and placing detours and alternative routes until more permanent repairs can be made. Outreach for routing will continue. Partnership. The city is coordinating with Boulder Valley School District on safe routes to school and traffic planning. The city and Boulder County are coordinating with RTD to restore routes to the system as close to normal. A continuation of the emergency response between the city and Boulder County is the work with RTD to develop a transit access program for evacuees. The city has worked with VIA to restore hop service. As we begin to shift gears from response to recovery, please know we are also working to anticipate what will happen next. Let's consider, for the moment, the first frost. Depending upon when that occurs and the level of saturation, we will see likely more damage to our transportation system, and we will start seeing our water mains break. This situation will evolve. New issues will be raised. Recovery is not a matter of days. It is months and years. On the communication front, and following up on the discussion earlier, just wanted to add that there is a Public Works Call Center. And this is also to help provide information to our residents and businesses. The telephone number is 303-413-7100. Those that called the city earlier at another number or through the Office of Emergency Management don't need to call again because we've already forwarded those calls and we've got that information. Of the 260 calls received through midday yesterday, more than half were reports of sewer backups in homes. Another significant amount were about groundwater flooding in basements. About 60 were related to debris and damage to roadways. Many of the sewer backups and basement flooding reports are from areas south of Baseline. Later this week, we have, we expect to have some more comprehensive information, and we're working on a mapped version of the troubled spots of the city. Information's also available on the city's homepage, and we're linking with Boulder Flood Info Net as well. So with that, I'm gonna open it up to questions.
All right. Thanks, Maureen. So just a quick suggestion, because there's like four pieces to this here. I think we take them one at a time so we don't kind of bounce from one thing to another and get ourselves confused.
We passed along some images that should be posted that you might want to look through. Among other things, there's the drainageway map and the floodplain map, as well as just some recent photos from this event. One in particular I wanted to flag shows a bunch of rock in the back of a pickup. Because this is the rock, this is what we're pulling out of the sanitary sewer system.
You pass those on to us by email?
They should be linked.
Yeah.
They should be posted.
So, so let's do this one at a time, and in just kind of semi-random order. But, I mean, there's our water supply, our drinking water supply is one. There's our wastewater and sanitary sewer system, which obviously is of some concern. There's the whole stormwater and flood control system, which is a big topic. And then there's transportation.
Right.
And so let's start with the drinking water supply and just see if we can focus on one thing at a time. Might be helpful. Tim?
So are we able to get the chemicals and supplies that we need up to Bataso, given the condition of Boulder Canyon?
We've been successful. We had a lot of effort, thanks to Larry Donner and Tracy Winfrey, who threw a lot of coordination with others. with others, were make, able to make sure that we were able to get the materials that we needed, the chemicals, up to Bataso during this event.
So we're good?
Yes, we're good.
Okay, thank you, Mo.
So Bataso lost its power for some amount of time, and it, has, has power been fully restored?
Yes.
Okay, but of course, we don't know, I mean, it could be a long time.
That's why system redundancy is important.
But, I mean, my understanding is, I mean, it, it works on generators, but there was some concern, at least on, it must have been Friday, Saturday, about just being able to get up there to deliver-
Yeah, there was.
-the material. And I, I mean, I don't know how much redundancy you can have of redundancy, but, you know, did we learn something from this about having more material stored, or?
I think it reinforced why you want to have a redundant system and hopefully have another operational treatment plant, if you can.
Which we lost.
Right.
Was that expected?
Um, I, the amount of turbidity, and, I, I mean, I think the event itself caused issues with water quality that, given the circumstances there, are, are reasons why we've been talking about a Carter Lake pipeline.
Yep. Okay. Are there water issues, drinking water issues, Ken?
Since they're kind of part of the water system, how, how are the low-lying hydro facilities doing our hydroelectric plants?
Jeff Arthur, our Director of Public Works for Utilities.
So those are frankly pretty low on the priority list at this point. We did get some flooding of the office at Boulder Canyon Hydro, the units appear to be okay, but basically, you know, we've lost communications to some of our primary drinking water facilities, so we have guys that know electricity, and, you know, our top priority is, is getting connectivity back to some of those other sites, you know, and with the condition of the water, we really don't want to be running it through those hydros at this point. We'll, you know, hopefully if things settle down on that end of the operation, we'll, we'll get a better look, and we, we could have those running as early as tomorrow, but at this point, we've been focusing on other areas.
So you, part of the emergency plan would be to shut those down, and which you must have done on the-
Yeah, we're able to, we're able to bypass those. You know, and, and on the, on the drinking one, on the treated water end of things, it's less of a concern, but the, the raw water, you know, even coming from that side of the system has, has been impacted just with the runoff, and we've, we've had a lot of work to do to, to even keep Bataso treating effectively, but we've been successful to do that with a lot of effort by the folks up there.
Great, thank you.
Suzanne?
Well, just to clarify for our listening audience and us, one more time, our drinking water has been fine, is fine, and we don't foresee any problems in the future unlike some of our surrounding communities. Is that correct?
That is correct. I, I did throw my caution about the first frost, because I, we anticipate, again, depending upon the amount of saturation, that our, we're going to have more, more water main breaks than normal.
Okay, thanks.
Maureen?
Mo, can you explain why that is? Most people would think the water mains are well beneath the frost line, so what, what goes on to cause that fragility to the system?
So, we typically, when the weather changes, see periodic, just breaks out in the system. I mean, that, some of it's, it's frost, some of it's just the, the soil shifts, you know, and you've got pipes that are under high pressure, many of them are, are quite old, and it doesn't take a whole lot of movement for things to come apart. So, I mean, reasonably, we, we see that under normal conditions, certainly with things having moved around already, and then aggravating it, depending on the condition of the soil at that point, it just seems probable, fingers crossed.
Hmm. Tim?
I'm curious as to the impact the storm had on our watershed, and whether there were significant landslides, mudslides, and whether that would affect our water quality, and also, I'm assuming that our reservoirs are topped out?
Yeah, the reservoirs are full, so from a drought-
So that's the good news, okay.
From a drought perspective, we're looking good, if there's some positive out of this. So a lot of our concern is, and you've probably heard, there've been a lot of dams failing along-
Yeah.
-in the state, so we have had our experts up there keeping a very close eye on particularly the earthen dams. You know, Barker Reservoir is a, you know, massive concrete structure, and there, you know, people were concerned about it spilling, but it's designed to do that, and it does it every year, so that hasn't been a big concern. But the reservoirs up above are, are earthen, some of them are, are very old, so that's been our, our top priority, is really just making sure the integrity of those wasn't impacted. You know, we, we've had some impact to, to water quality, but, you know, it's a big enough area, and it's, it's up high enough that really, nothing major at this point, nothing that we haven't been able to, to treat around. I mean, we're just fortunate that the source is, is so high, that it's not getting the same level of runoff, and it's, you know, accumulates as it comes down the funnel.
Thank you. Anything else on water, drinking water, water quality? Okay, wastewater and the sanitary sewer system. So I'll start this off, because you need to explain this to me. I mean, in theory, it's a closed system, because that's a theory, obviously not reality.
It wasn't till sometime Thursday morning.
So how do all the floodwaters and all the rocks and everything else actually get into the-
There's a, there's a couple things that happen, so one is, so unlike the water system, which is pressurized, so when you have a problem, it goes out, the wastewater system is not pressurized, which means that when the soil around it is saturated, that you do get water that perks in, in the joints. You also have manholes in the street and in some places crossing the creeks, so you get water that flows in, and basically, once that thing is full, it turns into a pressurized system, and we've had a lot of manholes pop off. I mean, we're only putting, you know, less than 12 million gallons of water into the system, and we're still getting 50 out the other end, probably more than 50, that's just, that's the hydraulic capacity, and that's where it overflowing in a lot of places. So, and, you know, once the lid's off, if it's, it's taking on what's in it, you know, so at this point, there's so much water, again, with everything maxed out, and, and the reason people don't necessarily see a truck in front of their house addressing what might appear to be a problem there, is until we get that system cleaned out the rest of the way down, there isn't necessarily a place to go, and at least at this point, we're assuming a lot of that is just hydraulically, the pipe is full of water. There are places where they're definitely full of debris, but until we have a place for that to go. So Chief Donner has been like Santa Claus, working with the EPA and others to help us find creative solutions to try to address some of those things, you know, and at this point, we are really just trying to get the downstream end down to see what we can draw down so we even can get a sense of which neighborhoods are really affected by blockages versus which ones are just queued up waiting to get into that final stretch to the wastewater plant.
Yeah, well, while we were there this afternoon, they were celebrating because it went to 40 million down from 50, so they were very excited that, and they were taking some precautionary steps with pumps and, and so anyhow, they, they were pretty excited that it was down to 40 million.
Yeah, we're doing a lot of creative things down there, trying to pump around different pieces, but the other downside, and you may have noticed when you were down there, is that whole area down there is ponds and lakes and levees and berms, and we have major interceptor lines that run under those. So we're doing all sorts of things to try to keep our system stable there. You probably saw we had a concern that we had lost a section of pipe entirely, I think that was Thursday night, and it turned out that it was just a culvert from somewhere else that had washed down and just come to rest precisely between the two manholes at a creek crossing, so we are-
That was good news.
Doing a, a lot of, a lot of work there to just try to get the system pulled down, and we really hope that as that happens, we'll, we'll see some of these backups that people have been doing for almost a week now, start to, to dissipate, and then we'll be able to do more targeted things in neighborhoods where it might be a localized blockage.
Ken?
Two things, first, I wanted to say, you know, our sister city Lafayette, they actually had flooding in their waste treatment plant, and so all of their affluent was going in to the St. Verain for a couple of days, and, you know, there, there's just a lot of problems, so hats off to utility. The other thing I wanted to say to the community, I was a bit horrified Friday morning, there was a, an interview on NPR of a couple of guys in a basement apartment in Boulder, and the water came up a foot and a half in their basement apartment, so they took the toilet out to have the water drain out the sewer line. Now, that's not a good idea for many reasons, one of which is, they could, you know, they're, they're going to get something back with that, and second, they're, they're increasing everybody's problems downstream, so you need to get yourself a sump pump, not drain stuff down the toilet, that's not a good idea.
Yeah, Suzanne?
Well, so, do we have a sense of, of how many people are still being affected by backups, or the scope of the issue?
Many, many. So, again, the entire system is, is still pretty much completely full, and until we get some of the, the areas where we're getting inflows and infiltration to settle down, we, we won't have a real sense of, of whether that they're just in the queue and they're stuck behind a whole lot of floodwater and making their way down the pipe, or if we actually have blockages, but it's many, many.
Okay, and so, the word to the folks who are in the queue is, you know they're in the queue, you're getting to them when you can, and we have no sense of timing on that?
We are in, you know, full-on emergency response mode, but yes, even though there is not a truck in front of your house, we are working on the issue, and we really hope that as we address these downstream issues and as the creeks recede, that some of the things on the edges will be able to move through the system, and at that point, we'll have a much better idea of where specific issues are going to be. We've got multiple crews deployed, Broomfield has been gracious enough to send us some folks to provide additional equipment, we've got contractor services, and we've got, we've got a ton of people on this, we've got consultant teams that are helping us evaluate options, but at this point, it's more a matter of, until the creeks go down some and stop flowing in and allow us to access some of these places, it's more that we're waiting in line behind the creeks to get to the plant.
The, the other question I have around that, and we've heard that from some folks when we were touring, is about, and this probably goes to you, so maybe I'll just put this in the parking lot, but, in dealing with aid, whether it's insurance, FEMA, somebody to help pay for some of this stuff, they, you know, we got a lot of questions about that, so maybe, is that, that's for you later?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I guess I will follow up on that, not, not to get the direct answer, but, I mean, how, since it will, in some cases, I suppose, come down to this, I mean, how, how does a homeowner, or how do we really distinguish the flooding where, just frankly, in my neighborhood, water table's very high, there's underground rivulets that are clearly flooding people's houses, it's almost certainly not sewer backups or sanitary sewer backups. In other places, it probably is sanitary sewer backups. I mean, how exactly does one determine?
I would err on this, I would err on the safe side, the systems are, are pretty intermingled, you know, if, if you're at the top of the hill and your toilet's flushing, and you've got some pretty darn clean-looking water, pretty good chance that might just be groundwater that's coming in, you know, if, if you're getting anything that, that smells or has evidence of solids, if your plumbing's backing up, I would just say, you know, if you're going to be working in it, I would assume that there could be things in it, and, you know, protect yourself accordingly and disinfect things accordingly. And if, and if you have the option, bring in the professionals.
Yeah, Suzie?
Yeah, I'm really glad you, you mentioned that, because I, I think a lot of people do not understand the danger in being out in that water, and we've seen people, in fact, I'm looking at a picture that you sent us right now with folks, little kids in the creek, and I certainly saw them in my neighborhood, so I think to the extent we can get that message out and keep repeating it, that it's not smart to be playing in that water. Include, include, by the way, CU students who seem to have enjoyed it a lot.
Others on the wastewater, sanitary sewer, Megan?
I think it's helpful for people to know the kind of things that are, that can be blocking the sewer, and on our trips this afternoon to the wastewater treatment plant, what was impressive was the size of the rocks that were pushed through this 42-inch pipe, and, which, at the time that Suzanne and I were there, they were actually removing these two automatic grates that are supposed to pull out the, the trash and the rags and plastic and stuff that comes with the sewage into the system. But in this case, they were being replaced, these are $100,000 machines, I guess, or more.
Brand new.
Uh, brand new, and they had been destroyed by the size of the rocks that were coming through this 42-inch pipe, so, and then the City of Boulder employees had to, have to now rake these out of the passageway of water by hand. So it was, it was very impressive, really, and-
And just to clarify, so most of the system, the pipes in front of your house are, are probably about eight inches around, they're like that, that big, so the things you're seeing coming out of that in a 42-inch pipe, you know, are probably, you know, unless we have a Volkswagen that, that got in there, it's, you know, we hopefully don't have big blockages that far down the line, but as we start to get into some of these upstream areas, we have manholes that are packed to the top with dirt and debris, and that's going to take some, some work to, to clean out.
Okay, let's move on to the third, the third topic.
Hold your folks.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, you probably don't get to go away.
Yeah. I was going to try, I kind of-
I know, but I'm not going to let you.
Kind of on the hook in a couple places here.
So, the stormwater, and of course, all the floodwater, flood control issues, all the work we've done, so questions or thoughts on that, Lisa?
Yeah, I, on our tour today, we went to, I guess it's 7th, a little bit north of, south of a university.
Near Gregory Creek.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And where the creek had gone through a culvert, and broken through the culvert, and broken through the street, and I live on Wonderland, where, I live one house from where the creek is diverted underneath Centennial, and there's a grate there, and there was tons of debris that just pounded up against that, and trying to pull that out was pretty intense, and I know this happened at Goose Creek, too, at the Mapleton Mobile Home Park, and so, I'm wondering if you, and maybe it's just too early, but I'm wondering if you have thought any about daylighting some of these structures, these creeks, these things, so that, you know, the water isn't channeled into these culverts, but actually has an open natural channel way in order to flow more successfully, and then the grates aren't-
Are you talking about kind of more box culvert bridge-type things, and as opposed to-
Well, some are box culverts, and some are just big, big culverts, but all of them have grates covering them, and I understand why that is, but that also creates a real problem in backing up the water, and then it does overflow, but it becomes higher than it naturally would if there was an open channel there.
And so just, so the other thing to, to factor in, and it was a, a big impact in this storm, is, is typically the, the culverts under the streets and, and things like that are designed for like a two or a five-year storm event, and when we get into anything bigger, we, we kind of just have to assume they're going to plug. In the grand scheme of things, they don't carry a whole lot of water, you know, and we do, those are really kind of for the, the little nuisance stuff, and, and they, as would be expected, that they didn't keep up after a relatively short period of time. We had folks out on, on Wednesday night, and they were thinking Goose Creek was flooding, and then if you looked at the picture, Goose Creek was flowing merrily along in the channel, and the street was flooded because it just couldn't get into the inlets in the storm sewer system fast enough.
Hmm. Ken?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure this will probably rearrange the Water Resources Advisory Board agenda for some time, because I know, in the past, I was, I was on that board for five years, we did look at mitigation on Gregory Creek, for example, and I'm sure we'll be pulling those older plans back out to review them again. I, I would like to point out that, you know, part of the issue the city has is balancing mitigation with the people whose backyards would need to be dug up to do the mitigation, and, you know, when you have this kind of event every 50 or 100 years, they're not too keen about having their backyards dug up, but, but we ought to give them a chance to, to look at what we've thought about in the past and talk with us again about what do they want to do, and what would they like the city to do.
We have, we have a, I can't even count how many different engineering consultants we have deployed just gathering data, because we have all these studies, and we've got a limited window- a limited window. And we haven't been, mostly not using our staff, because we're out trying to keep sewage out of people's basements. But out trying to gather as much data so that we can go and reevaluate those studies, figure out how things aligned or didn't align with the previous studies. And, and again, update maps as we need to, and then reprioritize our mitigation. And certainly, the areas where we've been challenged are exactly what you're talking about, is these little creeks that are the babbling brooks through people's backyards, where people really did not want to see, you know, an improved channel. And we may have people that are interested in revisiting it, based on what's played out.
George, is this on?
Yes, same thing. I did my own tour this morning up in North Boulder. And in fact, I called Terry Palmos as I passed by his project. And, and, and his comment was interesting, because the amount of water that was flowing through that would have, the little village that was there would be gone. And he, he really, he complimented the city staff in working so well with him and his engineers for that, that waterway that they, that they built through there, which really, he's under construction. And they did not have much damage on their construction site, because the culvert, or that large waterway, which appeared to me to be way overkill. In fact, prove me wrong again, that it wasn't way overkill, it actually worked. So he's going to send a letter out complimenting the staff that worked with him in the, in the development of this plan. So, just thought I'd mention it.
Jeff, my question is, when you say you have consultants out gathering data, what does that mean? Does that mean that you have people looking at where the waters actually were, how high it was, how the infrastructure functioned?
Yeah, there'll be a massive dissection of this. So that, a lot of, so, as you probably know, a lot of these flood studies, we outsource them to consultants. And so, to the extent we can, we're trying to get the folks that know those creeks inside and out, and know what's in the model. You know, the Dave Loves and folks of the world who have, you know, spent, some of them their careers studying these things, to figure out what we can learn from this and what we might do differently. So I could rattle off multiple engineering firms. But it's primarily those people that have done the studies and, and aligning. So that, you know, they're looking at debris lines, we'll be looking at photos. Certainly, the public has been great about giving us input on, on what happened. And, you know, and then we'll, once we're able to, and this is probably a months and years process, but to put that all together and figure out where our maps are pretty good and our predictions are on, and where we might need to, to make some adjustments. Anecdotally, you know, we're seeing a lot of places where things played out pretty close to what we expected. And we've had a few places where there's surprises.
Suzanne?
Let me just say, I think that's great. And I think there's a real hunger out there to learn from this event. And I guess, the one part, and maybe this will come up in the follow-up process, I hope that we do, especially in the places where things behaved differently, and there was a lot going on, a lot of different channels all over the place, I think it'd be really helpful, and I, there's a hunger out there for people to be able to tell their story about what happened. And then when the water, you know, when the rain really started, then this happened, and then, you know.
Absolutely, yeah.
And is there gonna be a formal way for people to know, to, to come talk to, you know, in the drainage, to have people come talk about what happened?
Yeah. And, and we'll have to figure out what that looks like. Again, right now, like, our internal resources are deployed and trying to address immediate issues.
Yeah, I know this is gonna come up later.
Later in the presentation, I'm gonna talk a little bit about some community outreach ideas that we have. And one of them will be an online opportunity, sort of like crowdsourcing, for people to get online and post their pictures and their stories. So that's one way that we might be able to capture this information. But I'll talk a little bit more about that later.
So Jeff, oh, sorry, Megan, why don't you go first?
And Jane, that'll be very valuable, because as we took our, as we went around town today, what we found is that people had taken photos and videos at high water, and were eager to show people what was go, show you what was going on in their neighborhood.
So I have a question. I mean, this is, I suppose, more of a policy question, but it needs to be asked, because I'm sure somebody from the public's gonna ask it, so I might as well do it while you're up here. You know, so during the height of it, I mean, I certainly was out looking at Gregory, there were people, a lot of CU students, who were doing a lot of work, channelizing it, essentially building ad hoc dams and sandbagging and all around town. You'll go up on Violet, you go up in, you know, the key places. And I think some people were surprised that the city wasn't helping in some way, either providing sandbags or helping build some of these dams, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it would be helpful if somebody spoke to that, about why we take the position we do, or maybe whether we should take another look at any of this.
As far as how resources were deployed during?
Well, about why we don't help out in those situations. I mean, even, even beyond the fact that all of our resources were rather busy at the time. But I suppose even beyond that, that the city is not, as far as I know, in the business of building makeshift dams and, and things like that, for a variety of reasons.
Or passing out sandbags.
Or passing out sandbags, right.
Yeah. And again, some of it was, this played out over multiple days. And a lot of where our crews were deployed, you know, overnight, Wednesday, Thursday, were just helping police and fire get roads closed, barricading things off. So again, it's one of those things where we were out strategically, but, you know, obviously, the number of vehicles we have and equipment, you may not have seen anybody in your particular neighborhood. And the other pieces, I mean, the flows were such that there weren't necessarily things that we could do. And even now, we're out, and similar to the sanitary sewer system, the challenge is, is we have to be careful not to put water back in creeks that's gonna just come back out somewhere downstream. So we're being really systematic and including our engineering staff in that to make sure, since things are still flowing, that we don't, you know, inadvertently move a problem.
Right. Do you have a, okay, I mean, I-
I'll just say the, also the learning, to your earlier question, as we've discussed, opportunities, continue to invest in infrastructure, and rain gauge, more rain gauges.
Well, I mean, I guess what I saw, and again, I thought some people were doing great work, but, and especially on Gregory, which, at least my limited look at the flood maps, Gregory kinda did what you might think Gregory would do, is, as shocking as that was to a lot of people, the flood map showed Gregory running down Seventh Street, and by golly, it ran down Seventh Street. But, I mean, I guess Mike-
A lot of backyards.
And a lot of backyards. Well, it shows that, too. But, I mean, my concern, and perhaps your concern, would be, you know, you build these dams, and you protect one thing, but of course, you're doing something downstream that neither you nor we nor anybody actually knows what you're doing, except you might be affecting somebody down below you.
Yeah, that, that's definitely been the concern, is you have to be really strategic about this, or you potentially make the problem worse elsewhere.
Anything else on the, on the storm system, the flood control system?
Just that, I just wanna underline that the issue you raised about, I just think we're gonna hear more about that, about how can we support people coming together to try to do their best to channelize, you know, when a stream is jumping culverts, and there's a whole lot of water just pouring out, and people are doing the best they can to save things. I don't know, just how we can maybe respond or help in those situations, it's just something to look at. You know, maybe there's, maybe it's just the way things are in an event like that. But it definitely was an issue in the neighborhood.
And I got one more thing. I mean, this is probably by more way of a comment or a leading question than it is a real question. But, you know, I really have been at this for a long time, and I don't remember all the details of every creekway anymore. But it certainly seems to me, well, I know this is the case, that we, we made the conscious decision not to try to channelize and build, you know, concrete or otherwise contained channels for every one of our tributaries and Boulder Creek, for that matter. And in doing that, we know they're not gonna hold the hundred-year flows, or whatever this was. I mean, who knows what this was in different creeks? Might have been fifty-year in one creek, and it might have been five-hundred-year in another. That's what we'll find out. And so we know there will be overflowing. And it always seemed to me that was a conscious decision for a whole lot of reasons, cost not being the only one, frankly. So I don't know if you have any thoughts about that, or things that you think we need to take another look at, or whether we're just gonna wait for the results of the study, or?
I think at this point, you know, again, our first priority is emergency response and getting things out of people's basements. And that's where we're gonna have all hands on deck, until we chase down every one of those. But, yeah, I think we gotta, we'll analyze the data and, and see where we have issues and how we want to prioritize. And then it is a conversation with the community about those trade-offs of, you know, more structural improvements, things that are, that may not be as aesthetically pleasing in people's backyards, and how that balances off with reducing risks.
Anybody else? All right, thanks. Thanks, Jeff. Transportation is the last piece.
And as I noted, transportation staff's been working really closely with utility staff, given the interconnectedness of the systems.
Tracy, any thoughts? Or introduce yourself first, I guess, and then?
My name's Tracy Winfrey. I'm the Director of Public Works for Transportation. You know, I recognize that this has been a very tough time for the community. We have had staff working in coordination with police and fire and utilities and parks and recreation, as you've heard tonight. So they continue to work around the clock on the system. We have, Mo covered a number of items that we're up to in terms of evaluating the street system, the pathway system, the bridge system, all while the water keeps flowing. And so we cannot assess all of it yet. We do know that we have sections of street that need to be reconstructed. We do have to work with utilities to make sure that if there is still water flowing in that area, we need to allow for the mitigation to occur from downstream to upstream. So we are, we are strategically looking at those places that dry out, and we can proceed with a reconstruction. Like tomorrow, we will be starting with a reconstruction on Willow Brook, north of Cascade. So as we can get out to do repairs that are strategic, we will. But again, we have to coordinate with utilities. The bikeway multi-use path system, as a number of people have said, a lot of it, not all of it, but a lot of it is co-located with the flood system, the flood conveyance system. And it worked. And so for fifty or a hundred years, you get to ride and walk and run and stroller, and then here comes the flood, and it does its job for the flood. So a lot of that pathway system is, remains in floodwaters right now. So it will be quite some time before we could really evaluate the full extent of it. We're cautiously optimistic about a number of these infrastructure systems, the bridges that they're, you know, we're continuing to monitor, but we haven't lost a bridge in this event. You know, I got to have dinner with my, I haven't seen my family much lately. And I got to have dinner with them last night in downtown Boulder. And downtown was happening. And people were having a good time, and we had to wait for a table, darn it. So a lot of the system is working. And, and that's not to say that there aren't parts of the system that really need serious attention. You know, we're pleased to see things like, you know, the signal system being a hundred percent operational. It wasn't that way through the entire event. We did have some signals down. We did work with police very closely on safe management of the travelways. We brought a generator up from South Denver to operate, to bring the Arapahoe's Foothill Signal System up. So that was a feat in the middle of this event. So I just, we continue to be in response mode. It will take weeks, months, years, really, to fully recover. And we will learn from this as much as we possibly can. And kudos to staff who worked in the Emergency Operations Center, who worked with people from across the county to help evacuate people. And kudos to folks like VIA and Boulder Valley School District Fleet, St. Brain Valley School District Fleet. I never thought I would talk to the guy who's in charge of the St. Brain Valley School District Fleet, help evacuate people from places really hit hard, like Lyons, to get them to a safe place in Longmont. So I, when I meet him, I'm gonna give him a hug and a kiss, whether he's married or not.
So Tracy, Jeff, and Mo talked about, you know, when frost comes, what's, what could happen to our, our water mains. What does that look like for transportation as, is it frost coming, or, you know, what happens in the next several weeks? Are we?
It, you know, it's similar. You know, this is, this will unfold for a period of time. There are some things that we can see and we can investigate. We can't possibly know everything that's under, underneath the roadway system. And so, we are, we may see some evidence of substructure issues over time. We will, we will do the best we can to evaluate. I'm checking with Stephanie West, who's, who's staff is working on that. So we will, this will unfold over time. We won't know tomorrow or the next day exactly the impacts.
Are there particular areas you're sort of, you can, you keep a special eye on, or you do something, I mean, or is it just, we'll just sort of see what happens?
Well, you know, we really coordinate closely with utilities. It's really where the floodwaters raged, that, where we're seeing a lot of the undermining. And, you know, we're, you know, we're seeing water continue to run down some streets from, I think Mo mentioned, that some of the areas hardest hit are, you know, Four Mile, and Gregory Creek, and Two Mile, South Boulder Creek, and in some sections, especially to the east. So those are the areas where we'll pay some pretty close attention. We also have other priorities that we'll look at in terms of, you look at the streets that carry the most people, you look at areas like schools, you know, populations. So we'll wanna be checking those areas carefully and repairing those areas carefully. Such close coordination with utilities.
The questions on transportation?
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you all.
So our next presentation is Mike Patton, our Director of Open Space and Mountain Parks. And he has a bit of a PowerPoint to show you, a prezi, I guess, a prezi, that will take you to different parts of the system, and you can see what's happened there. Mike?
Thank you. Our community has suffered through perhaps the worst catastrophe it's ever seen. Damage to open space can't be viewed through quite the same lens. Nonetheless, while it's far less personal, damage to the natural land system has been quite severe. I know many of you have been out there over the last couple of days. I know, I've heard about the tours you've made. Actually, Matt and I had an opportunity to look at some sections of open space. I'm not even quite sure what day it was at this point. But a number of staff and myself have been working for the last five or six days, really to try to get an assessment of what's happened in our system. We also attempted to address those initial public safety issues. We had people in the system in dangerous areas where they certainly should not have been. We actually had a rescue for someone who broke their ankle climbing in a very dangerous area during, while the system was closed, took several rangers, as well as Rocky Mountain Rescue to get them out. So we've had to address some issues such as that. But we also have spent some time developing a plan for beginning to assess the damage throughout our system of public lands. I'm gonna lay out our plan for you tonight, and I'm gonna show you what we've learned so far. Let me add a little bit of perspective, though. City Boulder owns almost forty-six thousand acres of public lands. It's a system that stretches eleven, or rather, excuse me, twenty miles from north to south, and eleven mi, and it's eleven miles wide. We have over a hundred and forty miles of trails. We have well over a hundred different structures throughout the system. So, you know, it's a big system to try to get an understanding of. So the first thing that we wanted to do is figure out what it is that we needed to assess. We identified both trail and resource damage, visitor safety issues, facility damages, trailheads. trailheads, parking lots, bridges, outhouse facilities. We then created a database so that we could store this information, be able to use it in some meaningful way. Because the system is so large, it was a little too big to digest all at once. So, we broke it up into 19 different sections. It wasn't based on acreage, it was based on similarities of topography, how many trail miles were in it, a number of different things. Then, we divided staff up into 10 three-person crews, an ecologist, someone familiar with trail infrastructure, and a ranger to help get through the system. Each of the people who, each of these crews was assigned two districts. One that only got, one got the biggest district. And so, we identified, actually, we created a form for them, so that they could go into the system, explore what they could find, identify damages, identify things that actually were, remained intact, and make some judgments about safety issues and those sorts of things. Each team also carried a camera, so they could record and establish GPS positions, so that all of the information that they collected could be mapped, to allow us to identify exactly where issues were. So, teams were originally sent out on Monday. They worked all day today. We think that they will be finished by the end of the day tomorrow, perhaps on Thursday. They've been downloading information since that time. What I'm gonna show you now is sort of what we have learned so far about the system. It's gonna be a little tricky, since this is...
Is it cord long enough?
It is.
Should be good.
So, this is prezi, and it allows some flexibility that other systems don't. But it's big, and takes up a computer that we had to bring in. So, as I said, our system, as you can see on the map, is over 46,000 acres, 20 miles in length and 11 miles in width. Too big to digest all at once. So, we divided it into 19 separate zones, and you can see they're not based on acreage, they're divided up in a number of different circumstances or reasons. So, the first area that we are looking at and have some photographs for, and again, these are GPS located. This is Daddy Draw Trailhead. This is representative of trailheads throughout most of the south. South Mesa Trailhead, and actually, Matt and I were there as well, is filled with mud. If you could make it through the mud field. The trail on the other side is really wrecked, there are gullies that run through it, fabric that holds the trail in place, is long since gone. They're in very poor condition. What you can see, sort of, you don't actually get a mouse with this, but if you can see at the top of the photograph, there is a rock field. We don't know where that rock came from. It wasn't there previously. We're happy it didn't land in the middle of our parking lot, it would've added to the difficulty of repair. So, the next area that we have data on is the Shanahan region. This is actually the trail surface of the south fork of the Shanahan. Obviously, at least there is a trail bed there. Again, parts of the Shanahan. Again, the trail is completely eroded here. This is a walking stick that you can see, and is about three and a half to four feet high. So, you can see the amount of the erosion in this particular trail. That is a pool that is about the same depth. It will continue to erode, water is still flowing in and out of that hole. So, Chautauqua, in the Enchanted Mesa area. This, also Matt saw, this is the upper part of the McClintock Trail, McClintock Fire Road. You can see where the trail used to be. This is a debris field that is probably about 40 meters wide, and I don't know how long I didn't walk that far, but it's as far back as you can see. It's also the area that our visitor broke his ankle.
And the, and the stone bridge is in there somewhere.
Yeah.
There it is, it's right there.
This is now the stone bridge, and believe it or not, that bridge, at its deepest point, was 15 feet from the base. So, that debris field that was behind there is, at least in some ports, parts, 15 feet deep. We're not sure whether it's a good or a bad thing, but there's an expectation, if that bridge wasn't there, that debris would've gone farther down towards Chautauqua. So, that bridge may well have served the purpose of stopping that, the flow of those This is farther, or closer to Chautauqua, but it's, the stream bed, you can see that there remains a fair amount of damage. That tree won't last very much longer, it's hanging on, but it won't survive. So, Gregory Canyon. That's the Gregory Canyon Road, that's six inches of asphalt that was just torn up and thrown around by the water. This is debris that surrounds the restroom at Gregory. So, this is the Saddle Rock area. That was the trail bed. It's been completely obliterated, just another scene of the same. This is the Amphitheater Trail. Again, it's been ruined. This is the Centennial Sinitas area, that's the shelter at Sinitas. It actually did okay, it's clearly covered with mud. This is the bridge from the shelter over to Sinitas. Bridge appears to be okay, but we haven't really been, had a chance to look at it carefully. So, this is Four Mile Creek. This is the old kiln trail. This is the spur, it's been, in this area, severe erosion. Again, this is the old kiln trail near the Foothills Trail. This is a rock or a trail hillside slump, covered part of the spur to the old kiln. The trail is under there somewhere, I'm not quite sure what we'll do with that. That's Four Mile Creek after most of the water has sited. That creek used to be just very small. You can see now that in some places, it's as much as 30 feet wide. Foothills Trail, or what was left of it. So, those are the only pictures I have. I could have shown on and on. The Chapman Drive has gully, has gullies that are as much as six feet deep, and we don't know how long. The trailhead at Chapman has been washed out. The creek undercut the Schnell Home that was right there. I don't know whether it will survive or not. The water took out our trailhead and then dove back into the natural canal, or channel, excuse me. And as far as we knew, know, the new bridge has fared just fine. So, we have completed assessment of 11 of the 19 zones. Some of the more difficult ones in mountain backdrop will take, obviously, more time to do. We think we'll have that information probably by the end of the day Thursday. By that time, we think that the data that we have will give us an opportunity to identify and prioritize restoration projects. We'll identify the most immediate opportunities for repair in the next several days, as well as opportunities for volunteer projects. We have had lots of people contact, contact us over time. We should have a number of volunteer projects identified by the end of the week. By the end of the month, we anticipate having an initial or draft plan for how we begin to do work. There are some trails that we've identified that have remained intact. Some of the trails that we have built most recently are carefully sustainable, and they have fared fairly well through this process. Putting the information into a database with GPS positioning really has a purpose. It allows us to be able to assess and identify like projects, rather than sort of doing it ad hoc. We'll be able to coordinate better if we have to move material of similar types, we'll be able to identify where that should be. So, that's basically where we are. It is going to be, obviously, from these photographs, a very long process. We'll know more by the end of this month.
Thanks, thanks, Mike. Questions on open space? Suzanne?
That's an impressive assessment you have underway. I guess, one of my questions is, just because I know there's members of the public out there anxious to be out there, is there a plan to, I don't know, on the places that aren't damaged, to open some, or how, what's the plan there?
So, what we hope to have by the end of this week is some identification of areas that we may not to do, may not have to do a lot of work. What we'd obviously like to do is be able to have some access in different parts of the system, something in the north, the central, and the south. Most of it will be dependent on, really, the condition of the trails and how quickly we might be able to do some work. But we should know something better by the end of this week. By that time, we'll have, we'll have staff's assessment of where there are not safety issues, and where we might well let people back into the system.
I think that will be great. I think it'll be easier to keep people off some areas if there's some places to go. I also think that you are right, that there's a lot of people that would be anxious to help out on projects, once they're identified.
Suzie?
Yeah, thank you. Whoops, sorry. For that assessment. Very helpful. Now it's staying on. I'm curious to know, there are many places in our system, Mike, where we integrate with county trails, and have you talked with our, your counterpart at the county about collaborating with us in ways that will allow the flow that people are used to?
Ron Stewart and I talked today. We're both sort of getting our feet on the grounds in terms of assessing, really, what the damage is, but we do expect to coordinate efforts.
Yep, thank you.
Others on open space? Lisa?
I just wanna say, it's really impressive that you've been, in two days, been able to assess, you know, over half of the system, and to do this level. So, thank you and your staff. This has been nonstop work for you guys.
And I'm gonna put in a quick plug, because, or a request, I suppose. I mean, as Mike said, a lot of these areas in open space are unsafe, and there's no question about that, but it's really more than that. I mean, going out there at this point is going to increase the damage. And, you know, you look at those areas, some of the ones I was at, all of us have visited various places, and trails are gone, and what does that mean? People are gonna tromp over something else, because they wanna get out there. Well, then that needs to get fixed. And so, you're not helping us or the city by, you know, doing additional damage in areas that are already heavily damaged. Many of them are environmentally sensitive. And I don't know what level of compliance we've got. Obviously, our rangers and everybody's busy, and they don't need to be out there, you know, playing police and ticketing people. But on the other hand, you know, we just really, this is everywhere around the city, hardly just open space, but open space seems like a place, well, gee, I could, you know, you can just go, it isn't gonna hurt anything. And in fact, it could hurt something quite seriously.
That's absolutely correct. Most of the trails are not usable. Those that are, are still awfully muddy and slippery. And so, creating braiding or secondary trails just adds to the difficulty of restoring the system.
Casey?
Thanks, Mike, and thanks for the incredibly thorough, even though it's only 11 of nine zones, assessment. So, same question I asked before, you know, we know that in other city systems, more is to be revealed. And I think behind my neighborhood, where Sinitas, you know, had a slide right into someone's home, I'm thinking that something, the ground has gotta be pretty soft and loose and saturated. The geologist over here, volcanologist. And, you know, what's, what's your assessment in that regard, just generally?
Hillsides are dangerous right now, in our opinion. There have been any number of slumps. We know that there are the potential for more of that. We actually, the city did analyze at least one portion of some, some homes behind the Sanitas area. Those hillsides are dangerous. They're not stable. You know, I'm not sure what in the world you can do, other than suggest that people protect themselves as best as possible. And Larry and his staff have been working with people to suggest just that. But at least, until there's some drying out, venturing anywhere on side slopes or around hills is very dangerous.
And will you guys be studying some of those areas further, you know?
We will. You know, we're trying to get some idea, that's part of the assessment, when I said there are public safety issues or visitor safety issues, those are one of the assessments that we're making as we tour the different areas.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome. Suzanne?
I guess this question doesn't just apply to open space, but I guess it came to my mind, given some of the things that are gonna be on the ballot regarding open space funding, and that is getting a handle on the cost of restoration. And I don't know what the timeline for that is, or the magnitude, or if you have a sense, but I guess that's gonna have to go for every part of the system we just were looking at. But, I guess that's an open-ended question. Do we have a sense or a plan for...
We don't have yet, but as we get our final understanding, or we get our final information, and we'll begin that process, we have a fairly good idea of what trails, what it costs to build trails in kinds of areas. Part of the problem, though, is, as you saw, there are gaping holes in the land, and trying to address those in some practical way isn't something that we've dealt with before. But we'll be working on it.
Megan and Lisa?
Rebuilding the trails seems almost to be a work for the design by geologists, rather than trail builders. Because I suppose the, the water courses that have made four-foot, six-foot gullies of some of those trails would say, this is an arroyo now, and the trail has to go elsewhere. Is...
I think that, I think that's true. So much of our system is based on 100 years of social trailing, especially those in the mountain backdrop. And so, there was never a great expectation that they would be hugely sustainable. You can build a sustainable trail, and we have some, some parts of the system have shown us that. Now, I think there may be, based on the flood information, some, a different take on, on geology.
Lisa?
Yeah, that was the question I was gonna ask, and then what you anticipate, and this kind of on Suzanne's question, the cost. And, you know, we're going to the voters to ask them to pass this open space trail, or open space tax, but it seems like the whole game has changed now. And I hope at the end of this whole assessment, the Board of Trustees and the staff will be able to come back and give us a better accurate assessment of what the true cost might be.
We'll take off...
I think you will have to redirect a lot of your trails now.
There's no question, we'll be redirecting departmental activities. We've already begun to look at existing work plans in priority, in light of what we've got going on now. Just to give you an example, when we built the El Dorado TSA, all of the trails in that area, we had, we worked extensively with geologists, because we wanted to be certain about the soil types. We know there are slumps in that area. So, we, we have done that in the past, we'll probably do it a little more extensively. It is very expensive.
And it seems, I mean, I've been looking at the slumps, landslides up in North Boulder and the mountain backdrop, and it seems like it is still very unstable, and that the landslides haven't stopped, that you're continuing to get some slumping going on, and...
Until things really begin to dry out significantly, they, as you would well know, they won't stop.
Yep. Thank you.
Suzie?
Yeah, I really appreciate your mentioning the safety issues. You mentioned the man who broke his ankle climbing, I think, on some of that debris. So, I hope our community is listening to how important it is, not only to protect the land, but also keep people safe, because if people are hurt, then we have to send rescuers up there to help them. So, the other thing I was going to comment on was the issue about cost. We are going to have costs across the board, not just in open space, but everywhere because of this flood. So, we didn't talk about costs for transportation, or for utilities, or for, we will have them across the board. So, I just want to make sure that we are aware of that fact and not singling out any one area. We're going to, we're going to have to rethink a lot of things. I think this council, future councils, this is a, an event of a magnitude and really historic. So, I think we're just going to have to pay attention to that all the way across the board. And I know Jane will be, will be bringing us things, you will, other department heads will. And we'll, we'll have to work our way through that with our community and make, and make some tough decisions, I'm sure.
I would add, the open space board is going to hold a second meeting this month, and hopefully, we'll take a first run at some cost estimates. I think we're scheduled for the 26th.
Anything else for open space-related issues? All right, thanks so much, Mike.
Thank you.
So, I'm about to bring you your first thing, talking about debris management. One of the concerns that has been most critical to many of our residents is that of debris management. In the midst of the flooding, as early as Saturday, we began to work with the county on this issue. We immediately determined that providing roll-offs at various locations around the community as soon as possible would be key. Over the weekend, city and county staff selected sites and began work with Western Disposal for this service. As you know, the roll-offs were in place on Monday and have received a significant amount of use. Because of concerns expressed in management of the sites, the city actually stationed staff members at the sites today. And starting tomorrow, Western and the city will staff the locations, and then thereafter, Western will staff them. And, and by the way, it turned out to be very good today. People were most appreciative to see a city person at that site helping out. But in addition, we have been discussing with Western the possibility of special storm curbside pickup for flood-related debris. The cost to do so will be significant. The last time we had a large cleanup event, it was $650,000, and that was several years ago. So, it's going to be far, far north of that amount. And we have no reassurances of reimbursement from FEMA. I think it's the right thing to do, but council needs to know that reimbursement is not assured, and that the timeframe within which the debris must be collected in order to qualify for maximum reimbursement, if we were to get it, and that maximum reimbursement is 85%, is very short. To get that amount, we've got to do this within 30 days from September 11th. I'm going to need to know tonight if you would support such an expenditure that might not get reimbursed. So, one of the aspects of debris management that's proving most difficult to solve is what to do with mud and gravel. This material must not be dumped in our waterways, sewer system, you saw the results of that, or streets. So, how do our residents get rid of it? What we do know is that if the mud is clean, so doesn't have any odors, and it looks pretty good, you can spread it on your yard or your garden. And if you have a really small amount, you can put it in your cart, and Western will pick it up in your cart. Though you've got to be careful of how heavy your cart is. Just note that. But larger amounts need to be hauled away, and they can go either to Western's transfer station out on 63rd, or to the landfill. So, so far, that is the solution that we know about, and we know that that is a workable solution. So, as we continue to learn more, we'll report back to you, but I'd like to ask you the question about whether you support moving forward with a storm kind of cleanup, and if you have any questions on debris management so far.
Lisa?
Thank you, Jane. I think that, I personally think that's a great idea, and I think a lot of people would appreciate it. I think at this point in time, many of their rugs and their carpets are so saturated, it's very difficult for them to, it's bad enough getting them out of their basements, but then it's very difficult to get it into a vehicle and then to the receptacle. So, I think that's the response a lot of people are looking for. My question is, and you put it out in a, in a press release or in some guidelines, but there seems to be a whole spectrum of materials that have been ruined in people's houses, everything going from appliances to electric toys to furniture. Will there be some kind of guidelines on how people get rid of? I mean, is it going to be just one, one, the old spring cleanup was just pick it all up? But there's clearly, you know, we now have state laws, we can't put electrical equipment in, in our waste stream.
Yes, there would be, there would be guidelines. I believe those guidelines may already exist on our website. We've, we've been developing frequently asked questions today. We've got a pretty robust website at this point that has all of that information. We don't want electronics in the general waste, that is unlawful to do. So, we will be proposing those guidelines, not proposing them, publishing them, making them known.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that people know they, we can go to their webs, your, our website and see how to dispose of these materials.
That's right.
Thank you.
Suzanne?
I just have two questions. You mentioned a 30-day timeframe, but it seems like sooner would be more helpful than later. What, so I guess that's one question, is how soon could we do this if we were going to do it? And then the other thing is, you also mentioned mud. Would there be separate efforts to deal with mud, or is that included in the debris, or how, is trash separate?
So, what we've discussed with Western so far, if we were to move forward with curbside, is that it could start Monday. And the way that it would happen is that on the normal day in which you would get your pickup, you'd put out your trash, whether you were compostables or recyclables that week, you'd put out that cart, and then you would put out all of the debris from the flood. You'd have three trucks going down your street, so one would pick up recyclables, one would pick up your trash, and then a last truck would pick up the debris. So, it'll be a pretty intensive system on the part of Western. What we think is that we can cover the city and get it done in about three weeks so that we can meet that 30-day deadline. That's pretty much how it works. Mud remains the issue. Because, as I understand it, if people have a lot of mud, the only thing that's going to lift that up is a front loader of some sort. And so far, we do not have any discussions with Western about them coming down the streets, or the city coming down the streets, and front loading mud. We, you know, we got to use our crews in other ways, and Western can't be doing that either because they've got to pick up the trash. So, there, there needs to be another solution to that. I personally wonder if that solution might be through volunteer coordination of some sort. And I know that United Way and others have volunteer coordinators working on things, like trying to hook people up with, with help. So, that could be a solution. Off the top of my head, I can't think of another one.
Well, I do want to follow up on that, because I am, I am also puzzled about that problem. I mean, the debris I've got, although I do think we need to be super cautious about people, not so worried about people putting in non-flood debris, so be it, I suppose, but I am worried about electronics and refrigerators and things that we can't take, and somehow we better be careful about that. Otherwise, we get stuck with the cost and the liability, which is awfully unfair to the taxpayers. But the mud, yeah, puzzles me, too. I mean, most people don't have front-end loaders hanging around their house.
Right.
And I don't know how easy it is to hire people to just come out and take care of that. I don't know if any of the city's equipment can be used, if people could get it into a pile. And I also don't know if the city couldn't help facilitate getting a contractor who could go around the city and take care of it. Because the thought of everybody individually having to do it seems awfully daunting to me. I don't know, that needs, I don't have an answer, but that clearly needs some more thought.
Yep, I agree.
All right, Megan and Ken?
It's also a matter of where you put the dump, or the dirt and then the mud, because it requires a fill permit, and those are actually not that easy to get in our town. The, I'm wondering if Western will be working with EcoCycle and Charm on the hard-to-recycle things and the electronics.
So, we already started working with EcoCycle and Charm. In fact, over the weekend, we were trying to have phone calls so that we can make sure that Charm would be open for people to bring their hard-to-recycle materials. So, we have contacts there, and that's the way to dispose of electronics, is through those means that we have already established.
Great. Ken was next, and then Casey.
Two questions. The first is, is Western back on a regular schedule? Because they kind of missed last Thursday and Friday.
Yep, they, they called everyone and said, we're going to start over on Monday, and they started with their regular schedule on Monday. So, those that missed on Thursday and Friday are going to get service this Thursday or Friday.
Okay. That's all for now.
Casey?
So, I'm with Lisa. I think this is an important service to the city, for the city to provide. You know, it's just not doable for other folks to get done. It's an expense, but everything, the road repairs, the, you know, wastewater, and every system repair is money. I just don't know why this is any different. It is not a typical thing for us to do, but these are extraordinary circumstances, so I think it's worth it.
I mean, I too think it's an important thing to do. I mean, people are struggling to try to figure out how to manage this, and you're already seeing it piling up on curbs. I mean, I think there's sort of an expectation. My question is, Jane, what is your thinking about this? If the worst scenario plays out and we aren't able to get reimbursed, is this a cost that would come out of reserves, contingency fund? We would have to drop other things? I mean, or do you want to wait to bring that to us when you know what we want to do? It's looking like there's going to be support for going forward with this, because we're talking about a lot of money. And I know our community is hurting and needs this help, and I want to support that also. But I also want to understand, and have them understand also, what we might be trading off, that we may not necessarily, as you said very clearly, and I appreciated that, we may not get reimbursed for this. So, this may be something that will come from our general fund, and that means some other things won't happen.
So, I don't know the exact source of funding from which we would get these dollars, but certainly, reserves are one of the top on my list. And of course, there is another reserve account called emergency reserves, which is another source of funding. Part of the reason that I'm being a little bit unclear about whether or not we can get this funding is that we have to go through with certain procedures with regard to it, and we'll be doing that. But right now, the, the emergency declaration and the disaster declaration that we have is for two sorts of things. So, thing number one is for personal assistance, so for people who, who have been displaced from their homes, who've had damage to their homes, who've had flooded basements. They can all get assistance or apply for assistance through FEMA, and that's in place. And then number two is for emergency-related activities. And so, the overtime, for example, that our police officers had to spend over the weekend is something that's eligible for reimbursement if we document it appropriately. But there's a third aspect, which is what is, it's called public assistance, but what I think of it as is assistance to local governments for damage to infrastructure and things like that. And so, where the debris collection falls is a little bit unclear. I think that it could be under the, the emergency, but it crosses over a little bit. So, that's why we're trying to be very, very careful and not assume that we're going to be getting those dollars. So, back to your question. We probably have the money. As, as Bob Ikem said, he will do his very best to help us find those dollars. We've got plenty of reserves, and we can do it. Just rabbit trail, you know, you've got the budget coming to you for first reading on October 1st. I am not going to recommend changes to that budget likely, based upon this. We will not have the damage assessments in time. We need to move forward with the 2014 budget as we've proposed it, with any changes council would want to make. And then we can come back in the future when we know more, but we won't know for many weeks.
Yeah, Ken?
So, I just, I just want to be clear, I am on board for it, and I thank you for being as precise about the, the issue, because it's, it's not an easy one for us.
It's probably down on the priority list a little bit, but we have a lot of alleys that are deeply scored and getting near impassable, and we have winter, winter is coming, as they say. And hopefully, we can get some grading done after other higher priorities are addressed, but maybe before the snows.
Suzanne?
So, I will just add to the course, I think this is something we need to do to help people out. Just a couple other thoughts on that is, we should maybe think through the electronic thing, and if there's, if, I don't know if everybody's going to drive out to Charm to drop off their electronics, if we want to do drop-off sites or something to facilitate that. I know that it costs to recycle electronics, so we'll need to figure that out, but I think it's worth figuring out. I'll just put that out there. I also think, I agree with Matt, we need to figure out something to do with the, the mud and the dirt. There's a lot around our neighborhood, and it seems crazy not to figure out a way to remove the big piles. And then the last thing, this is pretty minor, but some people put their trash out in the alley, and if they drag all their carpets to the alley, the alleys will be impassable. So, somebody should just think through the logistics of people putting their debris out in the alleys, if that's where their trash gets picked up. I'll just throw that out there.
So, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. Oh, you're, you're yes.
That's a yes.
There's another piece of, of this that I just want to throw out to all of you. I'm sensing that the majority of council, if not all of you, would like us to move forward with the curbside. So, the, the roll-offs that we've had at various locations, I'm real proud of the county and the city for getting those out there, but they are difficult to deal with. And one of the things that has been happening is that we open them for our residents and businesses to dump, and instead, we're getting a lot of people, we are. But in addition, I guess, we're also getting contractors who have been paid by someone or other to work on demolition, or whatever it might be, and they are merrily coming in as well and using the dumpsters and filling them up. And we're paying for it. So, a suggestion that we are talking about is, is closing down the dumpsters, for the most part, maybe leaving one or two sites open, but closing them down after Sunday, once curbside starts. Is that too aggressive for you?
No.
Well, I, I'm going to push back on that a little bit, because, you know, we found someone to help us get our carpet and drywall out. I don't know, why would that have been any different if I, we had him take it to the dumpster, but now he's a contractor, so he's not supposed to do it? I don't know that I paid him any extra, I have no idea, it was just, you know, here's 150 bucks. So, so I'm not sure that that's like, oh, these guys are taking advantage of the city. They helped us either way, whether we put it in the roll-off, or he helped us get it out of our house and put it in the roll-off. So, to say, you know, we're taking these away, I don't know, I, on Sunday? I know a lot of people who haven't moved that as quickly as we did in my house, so is that what I'm hearing, is we're going to get rid of all of the roll-offs by Sunday? I just don't know that.
That's my proposal, is that after Sunday, we switch to curbside.
And it's only curbside and no roll-off?
Yes. There might be a couple of sites open that we co-share with the county.
Because Casey?
Talk to the county about it.
Seems to think that.
Well, you could have them put it out in front.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, most people will have gotten their carpet up in it. And you need to.
For safety and health issues, you need to get that carpet and wet stuff out of your basement.
But Casey, you can also run out to Western Disposal, and, and I mean, if the contractor has it in a truck, they can go there just as easily as they, it can go to a roll-off.
Great, thank you, that's so helpful.
Tim?
Yeah, I want to support what your proposal is, Jane, and I, I
And I do, yeah, I wanna support what your proposal is, Jane, and I, and I think if you have a contractor, just to reply to Casey a bit, I mean, one of the costs of doing business for them is disposal of the material, and I think that is different than, well, I'm just telling you what my, my opinion of it is. And that's different than if we have a homeowner or a business, and doing, they're doing it themselves. So for me, there's a distinction. Okay. Anything else on the whole kind of debris and?
Clear as mud.
Yeah.
This is somewhat related. Someone emailed me saying that, you know, as you drive around, you can notice a lot of dried silt is being kicked up and creating clouds, and that that, given the sewage seepage, there could be some, you know, particulates contaminated with E. coli and other things, and I'm just wondering if there's gonna be any testing of that.
I don't know the answer to your question.
Does someone wanna answer that?
I don't know the answer. So if council members know the answer.
You don't know if the, if there's gonna be anyone in the city that tests?
I don't, I just don't know today the answer. I can try to find out.
Okay.
I, I, I know that there's some people from the USGS who are coming from the south and going to go to the north and collect sediment samples, looking exactly at those things. Right now, because of sequestration, we don't have funding to do that, but I think, you know, there will be an attempt to try to identify some funds. And I don't know all of the, the whole range of testing that they're gonna be doing, but these people were at 9/11, Katrina, Big Sandy, so they're gonna be, they started out today, and so they'll be in Boulder tomorrow.
Yeah, where I would go is I'll check with the Boulder County Department of Health, because they've been the source of information on some of the mud issues.
That makes sense. Although, I mean, this really speaks to the need to get this stuff up and get the streets cleaned as quickly as we can, and everybody has to realize it's gonna be a while, but that's what we have to do. It's gotta be a pretty high priority.
Thanks.
Anything else on this issue, the debris issue?
I think it's a great solution.
Yeah, we have to do it.
You'll come back about the mud?
Soon as I know more about the mud, I will report on the mud.
You could build houses out of the, you know.
Houses made of wood.
So before, I don't know if you're going into some wrap-up here or not, but.
Almost.
Almost, I know, I know you wanna get there. I just wanna offer a chance, if there was any other question that didn't fit tightly into a departmental.
So I'm gonna talk a little bit about community outreach, and then I'm gonna do the wrap-up.
That's one of them.
So while many staff resources continue to be dedicated to addressing emergency response and infrastructure issues, other staff teams have begun initial assessment activities, helped manage debris collection, initiated outreach calls to major employers, visited landmark properties and historic districts to assess damage and provide information, and developed and distributed frequently asked questions to homeowners' associations, neighborhood associations, and others. In fact, you have in front of you tonight a white piece of paper that says September 17th, 2013 on it. It's a cover letter from me, and attached to it are the frequently asked questions. This is on our website, it has been emailed to homeowners' associations, it will be distributed by staff at the waste collection sites tomorrow, so we're trying to get it as widely distributed as we possibly can. A staff team has also been working to develop options for both near- and longer-term neighborhood and business outreach. So two of the near-term neighborhood outreach activities that we're proposing are, number one, an online tool that we will create with help from Google, and they're volunteering their time, that will allow people to post information, photos, and stories on an interactive map. It will create community crowdsourced database of flood info that everyone can see and add into. And number two is a neighborhood meeting toolkit that will support people in hosting a neighborhood meeting where people could give input on what happened in their area, feed into their data, our database, as well as get info on recovery and things that they should be doing and thinking about. We plan to ask for staff volunteers who could be available to attend these meetings at a neighborhood's request, to be the face of the city and answer basic questions, as well as hear questions that we could follow up on later. So those are two of our near-term ideas that we cannot get rolling this week, but hopefully next week, we can have those up and running. So those are some of our initial thoughts in that area. So questions on that?
Questions on outreach, volunteers?
Yeah, I, I guess I have one. Sorry, I'm asking a lot tonight. I think that the neighborhood meetings are a great idea and maybe should be a little more structured, especially in areas where we know we, we have a lot to talk about. And I, for one, would love to be invited to at least, as council members, that might be useful for us to attend some of them. So, and I know you guys are really busy. I think that there's some priority things that we wanna learn and implement from this. So I would, you know, we can prioritize some of them.
Our long-range planners are the ones that are the best at meetings, and I wanna thank them for many of the great ideas they've been coming up with today. So longer term, having more structured neighborhood meetings is, is on our ideal list, but we just really can't commit the resources to it right now. And this would be something that I would report to you about later, like in two weeks, as we know more.
Any other thoughts? Okay.
So now we really are at the wrap-up. As you just heard, there's a lot of work to be done, and we are still in response mode. It's too early to quantify the total damage assessment or to determine the cost to repair our infrastructure throughout the city. We will not have that information for many weeks. Similarly, the expression of what kind of storm this was will be a matter for the hydrologists to examine through forensic methods. We will not have that answer for some time to come. However, I do want you to know that we are working hard, and we are in better shape than so many communities in, in Colorado. And in fact, our Gold Boulder staff was, as Tracy mentioned this a little bit, but I wanna say more about it. They were one of the groups that was staffing at the EOC over the weekend, and as you know, there were people in lines that needed to be evacuated. Our staff were the ones that coordinated with the St. Vrain School District and with the Life Bridge Church in order to get folks moved out of lines on these buses from St. Vrain. Thank you so much to the school districts and Boulder Valley School District was involved in well, as well, and coordinate those. We also coordinated meeting the National Guard at the flood zone and transferred hundreds of people from the military high-water vehicles for transport to the evacuation centers. We also worked hard, not only to keep Boulder informed, but also stepped in to assist Longmont. Our IT department was able to host Longmont's emergency website when its servers were jeopardized. We've also been supporting other first responders and quickly transitioned the Boulder Airport to allow military rescue vehicles and helicopters to evacuate thousands of county residents. The fact that we were able to help is a testament to the quality people that we have in our organization. And on a personal note, I wanna thank each and every one of you and every one of the people in the audience from our staff. You guys have been with us every step of the way. You've helped us, you've supported us. It has meant the world to me and to our staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jane. And I've got a couple of concluding remarks here. You know, I don't usually read things, but I'm gonna kind of read a little bit of this. And it's, I was thinking about this and thinking, well, you know, this is emergency, a lot of people around town are suffering, and you know, kind of patting ourselves on the back, but I, I think it is important to tell people that, yes, everything isn't perfect, but, you know, Boulder really did do a lot of things right, and the staff really has done an absolutely remarkable job. So one thing that I think people should know is that, that at the FEMA, of course, was out, incident command was out, and they shared control of this operation with the Boulder City Counter Emergency Operations Center. And although it, it's been noted, you, people should know that the city and the county jointly run this emergency operations center, so it's a fabulous example of cooperation that made it work so much better. And FEMA has said that the coordination and integration across agencies is the best they've seen for a disaster of this magnitude. In fact, FEMA wants to use Boulder County as a model on how to get things done in a disaster to share at the national level for other communities. So that is really pretty impressive. And anybody who is out there, I think, would second that sense that it really was a model about how to get things done and how to coordinate, cooperate, and collaborate was quite remarkable. We've always known we have great staff, but, you know, FEMA now knows it, and, and I think the rest of the, the country knows it. So again, a huge, a huge thanks to the staff, and a huge thanks again to our congressional delegation, the White House folks who talked to us. And I wanna also put in a thanks to the university for canceling the football game. And that was, no doubt, a very difficult decision for them, for all the reasons you can imagine. I don't need to tell you those, but that made a huge difference in the end. The, the thought of having 30,000 people come into Boulder with the weather being very uncertain, and with the roads the way they are, and basically all of our staff totally booked, it's just hard to imagine how that would have worked out smoothly. And so the university really deserves our thanks for recognizing that and, and, you know, putting safety first and cooperating with us and canceling that game. So we really appreciate it. Any rate, this has been an incredibly extraordinary event. Everybody on our staff is doing a fabulous job. Many of them, of course, have had their own flood impacts on their own houses and, you know, with their own families, and yet they've been out working for the city. Obviously, there are lots of challenges ahead, both for the city and for people who live in the community. So I guess the request is be patient, continue to have some grace, continue to help your neighbor and your community. This is gonna take a while. We've just heard that from a lot of our staff, that these problems are gonna take quite a while to fix, and some of them will only become evident over the next days and weeks and months. So we really appreciate everybody's cooperation as, as much as you can, and we look forward to working with everybody in the community and restoring the, the city back to the way it was, or hopefully even better, and learning and making sure we're even more prepared the next time an event like this might happen. So big thanks again to everybody, the whole community, the staff, everybody who's been involved in this. And I'm sure we'll be getting, we have, we don't have a meeting next week, as it turns out, it's rather something of a miracle, and then we have five council meetings in October, and I'm assuming we will get updates.
Six.
Six, oh, six, yeah. I was trying to make it feel better. Six council meetings in October, and at least five of them, the ones on Tuesdays, I assume we'll kind of get some updates and more information about what's going on, not just for us, but for the community, so people really understand the status. Susie?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick pitch. We've been talking about a lot of recovery issues and all the work that people have been doing, and, and Ken and I were out at the airport today. I know all of us got a chance to go to a variety of places. We have firefighters from Colorado Springs, we have folks from Gunnison, we have folks from all over. US Army is part of the crew with the helicopters as Colorado National Guard. I think our community should understand how many people have come to support us, and, and we thank them profusely, and I know everyone did who has encountered them. We know there are a lot of people who are struggling and have problems. We have a wonderful United Way. I wanna just read their website, so if you wanna contribute, it is www.unitedwayfoothills.org. And there are a lot of people who need help. So all of us can contribute, whether it's in kind, or whether it is, because there are volunteer opportunities as well through United Way, but they also need money. They need help to help those who have had such a hard time, so I just wanna make that pitch.
Right. And I'd like to also thank, Susie, you kind of reminded me, I've gotten lots of communications from mayors around the metro area, and actually mayors I know from around the country who have offered their support, their concern, and especially the local ones, truly offering whatever they can do to support us. And that really does mean a lot. I mean, this place works a lot better when we work together and, and we support each other, as, you know, as we've said, we've been helping out up in the county and in other areas, but rest assured, other people are ready and able to help us as well, and it does make a difference, and we need to really acknowledge that. Macon?
I don't think we've sufficiently acknowledged the community and the people who have our backs and have the backs of the staff out there. When Suzanne and I were out touring today to different stressed parts of the city, we met people that are just remarkably resilient and are really pitching for their neighbors and themselves and the city to do its work and put all this back together again. Meanwhile, they're sucking it up and doing what they can to make improvements in their neighborhood, get the carpet and the stuff that's been damaged outside where it can dry, and then participate in trying to figure out how the strange stream, stream patterns developed, which scoured their houses and flooded their basements and all of that. We found expressions of, of pride in Boulder and support for this community, and a, and a, really a love of being part of the community that came to flower in part with this calamity. They, at the same time, they fought, their neighborhoods are flooded, their basements are flooded, they took the time to say, "I'm so proud to be part of this community." And, and as one woman told us over on Rosewood, talking about her basement that is flooded with Boulder sewage, said, "At least it's Boulder sewage. I know it's more healthy than in many parts of the country." You know, that, that, I mean, that is the spirit that makes the city great, it really is. And I, I just, there are a lot of people still with basements flooded and having these, these problems. And I know that the city staff recognizes that, and, and we all should, and give our thanks to people that are out there, you know, really rooting for us to be successful and do our jobs so that they can get their lives back to normal. And we need to thank them as well, too. It's, they provide the platform and the funding that enables all of you to perform at a very high level.
Thanks, Macon. Okay, well, a little later than usual, so we appreciate your patience, those of you who signed up for open comment. Again, any of you who...